Please stand. Oh, yes, oh, yes, this county commission is now open pursuant to adjournment. God bless this country and this honorable court.
Thank you. That was Chief Deputy Jeff Puccini. Sheriff Weatherford is not with us this evening, so we appreciate him opening this, uh, this evening. And at this time, our invitation to be presented by someone that most of us know and have known for a long time, Reverend Will Duncan, who's at the Wrong Baptist Church in Bed Page, Tennessee. He has served Sumner County for many years. He's been preaching the gospel for sixty years. He served as a member of the Sumner County Board of Education from September of nineteen eighty-eight through August of two thousand and fourteen, and was the chairman of the school board from nineteen ninety-six to two thousand, and from two thousand to two thousand and eight. He is currently serving as a court officer, uh, and he had a very special relationship with a very good friend of mine, and that's Judge Buck Rogers, who passed away this past year. Uh, but, uh, on July the tenth, Reverend Duncan will be retiring from the Sumner County Sheriff's Department. So Reverend Duncan, we appreciate everything that you have done, and if you would lead us in prayer, we would appreciate it.
Thank you. Let us bow. Et tuis, God, I have my Father, as we come tonight, we come as an empty pitcher before a full fountain, realizing that your mercy and your grace has brought us thus far. We're grateful and thankful for the blessings of life that you have bestowed upon us from the early existence of our lives to this present time and this present moment. We thank you for letting out the brick and threads of our unworthless lives and bearing our golden moments to linger on of our long this side of eternity. As we come tonight, we pray that you would give us wisdom and knowledge how to do the thing that would be pleasing and acceptable in thy sight. We realize tonight, Heavenly Father, as we come to make a decision for the students of this county, and for those, Heavenly Father, who are working so hard to make a difference and a positive in the lives of our young people. Tonight, we know that you are our prayer-hearing God. We realize that you heard Daniel in the lion den, you heard the Hebrew boys in the fiery furnace. Not only that, you heard Elijah on Mount Carmel, and you heard Jonah in the belly of a whale. Tonight, we know you're the same God, Heavenly Father, that opened the blinded eyes of the man that was born blind, enabled the lamb that was wavered to walk, Heavenly Father, thirty-eight long years you healed him. We come tonight, we need a healing power tonight. Our world is in a terrible shape and in a terrible condition. We pray for those who have been devastated by tragedy tonight. We pray that some way, somehow, that you will lead and guide them and help them to realize, Heavenly Father, that today's sorrow, Heavenly Father, will be tomorrow's joy. We know sometime in life that outlook is dark, but we realize the uplook is bright. We realize that what the Psalmist said, "He will look through the hills from which cometh his help; his help did not come from the hills, but the Lord who made the heavens and the earth." Thank you for the blessings of this day. We pray for this staff tonight, we pray for this meeting, and we, Heavenly Father, we pray for your Holy Spirit to dwell down on those tonight who will make decisions, that it will be betterment for our community and the place in which we live, each day of our life. May we look up to thee, because we realize without thee we can't do nothing. Thank you again, Heavenly Father, for the traveling grace that we have come here tonight. And when we leave this place, we pray that you would guide us back to our many homes and destinations. These blessings, we ask in the Son of Jesus Christ, who died on the cross for us, in his name we pray. Amen.
Now, to remain standing, Captain Court Clerk Bill Kemp, ladies and gentlemen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, we place call to Roe. Roe calls now. Open these wishers, please record your presence. Just chairman, we have twenty-two members present. Okay, let me just report that Mr. Scott Langford will not be with us tonight. He is in China at this time, so, uh, having a great trip.
Carolyn's here.
Okay, well, when she comes back in, we will mark her presence. Thank you. Uh, now for approval of the regular agenda and the consent agenda, let me make a couple of announcements here. First of all, without objection, I would like to move the certificates of recognition. Uh, before recognition of the public, we have several young people who are here this evening with us who received awards, so I'd like to move that without objection. And, uh, on the agenda, it says that we will, uh, just for clarification, we will not be setting the tax rate. Uh, it is scheduled for next month. That was put on there, uh, to let everyone know that we will be, uh, we'll be discussing the tax rate in July. We will be discussing, uh, the budget this evening. So, we, uh, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
And motion from Mr. Marv, second from Michelle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda. Uh, approval of the minutes for May eighteenth, need a motion for that?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Foster, second by Mr. Ring. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then at this time, we will do the certificates of recognition, uh, and our first group, uh, will, uh, be, uh, the state discus champion, and, uh, Mr. Ring is going to, uh, hobble up here and make that presentation for us. Mr. Ring had his knee replaced a couple of weeks ago, so, uh, he is struggling. I told him he needed to, he'd roll it up here in his chair, but he said he thought he could walk. So we've, uh, is Brett here? Brett?
Yes.
Come on down, Brett.
Whereas Brett Neely, a two thousand fifteen Gallatin High School graduate and class salutatorian, salutatorian, recently became the state's three-time consecutive discus throw champion, and Gallatin High School first three-peat single event champ at the annual spring fling championships. And whereas Brett started throwing discus when he was in fifth grade, and through his years of effort and hard work for his, uh, he has earned numerous titles and awards. Most recently, he became, he became state discus throw record holder with a one hundred and eighty-nine foot, one-inch throw. Whereas, in addition to being an extraordinary track and field talent with limitless potential, Brett is an outstanding student who graduated with a four-point-oh grade point average, and is a Kansas State University signee, winning both academic and athletic scholarships. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on this fifteenth day of June, two thousand and fifteen, that this body does hereby congratulate Brett Neely for his awesome accomplishments, and wishes him many future successes, and be it hereby further resolved that this resolution is to be spread on the minutes of this body, and the clerk is to furnish a copy of this resolution to Brett Neely. So moved.
And motion by Mr. Ring, second by Mr. Pomroy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Okay.
I think his younger brother came in seventh.
He did.
Right. So that's correct. Congratulations. Also, while he is up here, uh, we're gonna let Mr. Ring make the presentation to the Sumner County salutatorians. If you are here, as a salutatorian, please come down front. Uh, you're welcome down front now, please. And parents, if you would like to step up and take pictures of him, you're certainly welcome to do that. We're very proud of them, and I know you are.
Just got on either side, sprouting like weeds.
Yeah, just turn around and face the audience.
You can help, you can help. All right, all the resolutions are, uh, identical. Sumner County Board of, uh, County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on this fifteenth day of June, two thousand and fifteen. Hereby honor and commend, uh, these students for the, uh, the two thousand and fifteen graduating classes, uh, from Sumner County schools. I so move.
Second.
We have motion by Mr. Ring, and second by Mr. Marv. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And let me call out each of their names and give them their certificates for those who are here.
Hold on, let me finish this.
I'm sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Okay. Congratulations.
Yeah, hold your applause to the end, please. Jocelyn Humphries, not here, White House.
When you present that, would you mind if they shared with us where they're going, what they're going to do?
Certainly.
Congratulations.
Hayden Nelson, White House High School. Ashley Centel, White House High School. Joseph Tate, White House High School. Leah Pendley, White House High School. Jordan Dunn, Station Camp High School. Emma Culbertson, Station Camp High School. Okay, just about everybody's left, I guess. Grant Garrison, Westmoreland High School. Sarah Kennedy, uh, Westmoreland High School. Miller Camper, Hendersonville High School. There we go. Congratulations. Finally got to somebody. Tell us, tell us what your plans are.
Uh, I'm going to Tulane University, down in New Orleans, and, uh, probably majoring in, like, economics or something.
Or something. Tabitha Peter, Hendersonville High School.
I will attend Wheaton College, Illinois, to study mathematics and Spanish.
John Thomas Payne, Portland High School.
I'll be going to the University of Tennessee at Chattanooga to pursue a degree in chemical engineering and running cross-country.
Susan Schickling, Merrill Hig Magnets.
I'll be going to the University of Tennessee at Knoxville to study biomaterials engineering.
Let's see, I know who the last one is, so I'll just go through that one. Andrew Smith, Gallatin High School.
You need to recover, Mr.
Yeah, thank you.
Don't, oh, don't hold it against me, but I'm going to the University of Alabama for actuarial science.
Congratulations, guys, and thank you. Mr. Marv, you want to come over? Mr. Marv, you want to come by, please? Okay, White House DECA, are they here? White House DECA here? Come on down.
I kept looking for my fourth or something. Okay, who are you? This resolution is honoring White House High School DECA students, whereas fifteen members of the White House High School DECA recently attended the International Career Development Conference in Orlando, Florida, and a team of these students competed and won first-place international winner title in the Financial Literacy Promotion Project, and whereas Elisa Gambrell and Taylor Hubs and Michael Payne, under the guidance of the DECA teacher sponsor, Ms. Dawn Walters, competed with a hundred and sixty other teams, showed innovation and teamwork, and demonstrated that they are capable of achieving great things in the realm of marketing, management, entrepreneurship, and business, finance, hospitality, and marketing skills and service, and whereas these dedicated, hard-working students are an inspiration to others and brought both, not only honor, not only to their schools themselves and their families, but also to our county. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in the regular session of the fifteenth day of June, two thousand and fifteen, that this body does hereby congratulate and commend the members of the White House High School DECA organization for their outstanding achievements, and wishing them much success in their future endeavors. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall be spread on the minutes of this body, and the clerk is to furnish a copy of this resolution to the White House High School DECA organization. And I so move.
Second, Mr. Foster, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, ladies. And now, Ms. Marv will present the teacher of the, teachers of the year and, uh, the principal of the year. Ms. Marv?
If you are a teacher of the year or the principal of the year, you must come forward. Okay, you can stand. Yes, she is. I know she's standing. All of these read the same except for what they were doing. The Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on this fifteenth day of June, does hereby honor and commend Ms. Candace Arwood for achieving the honor of elementary-level Sumner County Teacher of the Year. Congratulations.
What comes from all person?
The middle schooler is, uh, Ms. JoBeth Henley, and she's not here. Um, the high school level is Ms. Jennifer Coulter, and she's the high school level of Sumner County Teacher of the Year. And the principal, the principal of the year is, Sumner County Principal of the Year is Mr. David Hollins. And I so move.
Second, Ms. Marv, second by Mr. Foster. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both like sign. Congratulations. Now, to Mr. Mike Guthrie, who will come up and make the presentation to, um, and for the EMS department.
Uh, Mr. Keith Douglas, if you'd like to come up, please. While he's walking up, we have a resolution honoring our EMS director, Keith Douglas, uh, who's been a leader of our Emergency Medical Services Department for many years. Uh, even whether he's held that title or before, he's held the title of director, he's been a leader there for, uh, for us. He's constantly attempting to make improvements to our EMS department, which, uh, as good as they are, is rather difficult, uh, but, uh, he's always striving to improve the care and the quality of service that he provides to the citizens of Sumner County. Whereas in April two thousand and fifteen, the Sumner County EMS Director Keith Douglas was one of three recipients of the Field EMS Bill Advocates of the Year Award, a national award recognizing the outstanding volunteer efforts of EMS professionals who support passage of this landmark legislation. Whereas Mr. Douglas, acting as the National Association of Emergency Medical Technicians' Advocacy Coordinator for Tennessee, was dedicated to raising awareness in Sumner County throughout the state, and throughout the state, uh, of the Field EMS Bill, which stands to modernize EMS services by aiming to create an innovative, patient-centered, and highly-integrated system. And whereas, Mr. Douglas also works diligently, day in and day out, to fulfill the public's expectations, that all who call upon EMS can depend on the department to provide the best quality of care, and for this reason, we owe him a great debt of gratitude. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on this fifteenth day of June, two thousand and fifteen, that this body does hereby recognize Mr. Keith Douglas for his commitment and determined support for the Field EMS Bill and for his dedication to our county, and be it further resolved that this resolution shall be spread on the minutes of this body, and the clerk is to furnish a copy of this resolution to Mr. Keith Douglas. And I so move.
Second, Mr. Foster, second by Mr. Pomroy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman and, uh, County Commissioners, I can't tell you how fortunate we are to have caliber of EMS director that we have in Keith Douglas. Uh, he has done a fabulous job. He and his staff are gods in our county and protect our citizens twenty-four-seven. And with that, Keith, would you like to say something?
So Mr. Holt says I need to inform you that I'm great.
That's what I'm thinking.
No, he, uh, so he gives me a phone call the other day, and he says, "I think you need to be at the county commission meeting," which normally he doesn't do. I usually know if I need to be there ahead of time, but, uh, he let me know that couldn't, my, my budget could be on the chopping block, so I hope that's not the case tonight. But no, I do wanna thank, I do wanna thank the commission, Mr. Holt, all the staff here, uh, especially those that served on the Emergency Services Committee. Um, I told them when I got this award that there was three that were given nationwide, and I said, "I'm convinced that there were only three nominations, you know, for that to happen," but I do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
And let the record show that Ms. Kruger is, uh, is now here. So, uh, it's time for recognition of the public. Uh, we have a sign-up sheet if you would like to speak. Uh, you may do so. If you have not already signed the, uh, the petition sheet, uh, come on down, I'll let you sign that. They will remind you that, uh, items that, uh, you, you think on will have to be on the agenda. There is a five-minute limit. Mr. Kemp will have a thirty-second, uh, warning for you with thirty seconds to go. Uh, we ask that you, uh, say your name and your address when you, uh, when you approach the microphone, and we ask that you not speak in an inflammatory manner, offensive manner toward any commissioner, any elected official, or any other citizen. Okay, first on the list is Larry Hodges. Mr. Hodges, Montana. You'll just come down to the podium, and you can speak from this microphone.
My name is Larry Hodges. I've lived in, lived at, uh, I live at one oh five on Cavan Drive in Gallatin, Tennessee for the past thirty years. I come to, I come before you to address part of Sumner County budget that deals with the election, with the Sumner County Election Commission's funding. The minister, the administrator of election, Laura Ashley, brought before the Election Commission a motion to eliminate early voting satellite locations for the March and August two thousand and sixteen elections. The reason given was to save money. This leaves Gallatin the only location in all of Sumner County for early voting. The motion passed four to one. I would like to know why the Election Commissioner is using financial consideration to justify the elimination of satellite early-voting locations when they have turned budget money back in two thousand and fourteen and plan to do the same in two thousand and fifteen. I would also point out that in the United States, two thousand and ten census, the population of Sumner County was one hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and forty-five. Thirty thousand, three hundred, uh, three hundred and ninety-nine of those living in, of those are living in Gallatin. You subtract those numbers, and it gives you one thou, one thousand, uh, a thousand and thirty, two hundred and forty-six people. That's eighty-one percent of, of Sumner's population. Of those eighty-one percent who, who are registered voters have to pay extra in gas in order to travel further to Gallatin, take longer time off from work, and endure unnecessary hardships because of no local satellite voting election will be available. I would, I would also like to point out an example of how many Sumner County voters use early voting. According to the Election Sumner Report, founded on their website on August the seventh, two thousand and fourteen, in the, in the state primary and council and, uh, county general election, seven thousand, two hundred and eighteen used early voting and absentee voting. Compare that with twelve thousand, six hundred and forty-seven that voted on Election Day. Let me repeat that I would like to know why the Election Commissioner is using financial consideration to justify the elimination of satellite early-voting locations for the March and August election of two thousand and sixteen in all of Sumner County. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much.
Kevin Baker, four-two-four AB Wade Road, Portland, Tennessee. Admittedly, this was my first, I'm speaking about the budget. Um, admittedly, this was my first opportunity to sit through the budget-making process here in a, um, a public environment. Um, I did spend thirty-three years in corporate America, involved in process engineering and, um, operational management, so I prepared my share of multimillion-dollar budgets over the years. Um, and frankly, I was a little surprised at, at the process. Now, admittedly, I, I wasn't here last year, so I didn't see what was done last year, so I'm sure people will say, "Well, it's always been done this way." But I was really kinda surprised at the lack of diligence by our elected officials in asking the hard questions about the various expenditures. Um, now I know and understand that the Budget Committee does not set, and you folks don't set, the school budget, but you do, and you are, a gatekeeper for the total funds, and I was surprised at the lack of questions. Now, Laura and I either sat through every single meeting, or reviewed the tapes multiple times of every meeting involved in the process, and again, both the school board and the study session, and the Budget Committee, the, 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 the lack of questions is astonishing. The lack of, of questions regarding detail is, is astonishing to me. I mean, last year, we, we asked our citizens to ante up twenty-four percent more in, in tax revenue, but nobody asked questions like, "Well, why in whole does this, this county spend approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year on dues and memberships for an elite few group of people in both the school system and in the, the, the general operation of the committee?" We, we, we show that we're raising the school budget by nine and a half million dollars, and, and the, the list of questions from the school board, as well as the Budget Committee, was, I could fit it in, in a two-minute soundbite. We're, we're going from zero to fifty interventionists in the school system, and nobody at the county level asks, "Well, is, is that the best use of our money?" We're talking serious money here, folks. And the way I see it adding up, I, I don't know how, you know, I know we're gonna talk about the tax increase next month, or, or the, the lack thereof, but we're, we're on an unsustainable path, and, and I think really that the overall board needs to take a look at this and, and, um, put in some better process control, 'cause frankly, I didn't see much, you know? The, um, the first meeting, the, the, uh, subcommittee says, "Oh, you know, we're gonna lock the, um, nonprofits in at, at this level," and next thing you know, next meeting, "Oh, they're, they're caving in and giving thirty thousand dollars more to, to things that are questionable." Um, you know, like I say, I, I just think we need to have a little bit more diligence when we're spending other people's money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Laura Baker, four-two-four AB Wade Road, Portland. And, um, you know, while we really appreciate the opportunity to address citizens and the commissioners, it's a little hard doing it before a meeting, 'cause we're gonna hear lots of things tonight. doing it before a meeting, because we're going to hear lots of things tonight about the budgets and what a great job everybody did getting things in alignment. And I'm telling you right now, there are a lot of questions about this budget. And next month, they may vote to not have a tax increase. I don't see how we cannot have another one. Maybe because it just happened in November, everybody's a little gun-shy to put another one in, but this stuff just does not add up. There are millions of dollars out of whack, money here, money there, all over. You can't compare one thing to another thing, but friends, be engaged. Next year, I don't see how we cannot have another tax increase. Make sure your antenna are up and your ears are open for what goes on tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Neil Siders?
Neil Siders, 1108 Lockland Drive, Gallatin, Tennessee. And unlike a previous speaker, I have sat through the budget process many years in a row, actually more than a lot of y'all. And last year, during the budget process, I heard a lot of criticisms launched towards a previous commission about funding a budget that the expenditures exceeded the revenue, how eating away at our reserve funds leads to tax increases and other unpleasant, unpleasantries. And then, two years in a row, I watched this commission pass a budget for the School Board. I understand y'all don't set the budget, but you do set the expenditure that dipped into reserves massively, that has depleted the school system's reserves, that has expenditures that we haven't taken time to slow down and look at. And, you know, this English language we all speak, it's a wonderful language, because that language has a word for the actions of what has been conducted by this body: hypocrisy.
Thank you. David Cummins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm David Cummins, live at 1514 Highway 59, Portland. I agree with everything that's been said so far. One thing that I didn't hear a text on, I said in the budget meeting that we spent a bunch of time, Val Britton, I guess you'd say, Judy Harden of the Highway Department, over part of her few pennies, I think it's less than two, that she gets from the county on the budget, is trying to get a hundred dollars, a hundred thousand back from her, some such thing. And then, like Kevin said, there was no questions asked when the School Board presented their budget. The only comments I heard was a few of the commissioners asked Mr. Phillips if he had included so-and-so. It sounded like they was wanting him to spend more money instead of less. Commissioners, y'all have get, I've heard you talk about you don't control the budget, especially you of the School Board, and you don't. But you do control the total amount. You don't control how they spend it. You give them millions extra this year that we will have to maintain, that us taxpayers will have to maintain for the next several years, probably longer than I live, a bunch. And I don't know what the answer is. I know we added a bunch to one of the later budget meetings to Forward Sumner's budget. In my opinion, Forward Sumner needs to be removed from our contributions. I don't know that they've ever done a thing for me, and I don't know of anything that they've done for anybody in Sumner County. I heard something mentioned about the school in Portland, the adult education, whatever we call it, is involved with that, but Billy Comenden is totally responsible for that being in there. I don't know of any case where Forward Sumner helped to bid on that. And I can't, well, I just can't think anything good much to say about our commission. It's just not really watching after the taxpayers' money. You need to start treating it like it's your money, instead of just blindly giving it away. You know, the nonprofits, they all do great things. But I personally like to decide myself what I give, who I give my nonprofit money to, not let a bunch of commissions, commissioners decide. I know most of y'all is a lot smarter than I am, but you're not, I want to spend my own money. I don't want you to spend it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cummins. Okay, that's the end of this conference. Recognition from the chair. Let me remind you, I think everyone received, there's going to be a grand reopening at the Sumner County Regional Airport this Saturday at 11:30. I think there'll be some food provided and a tour of the facility, so I'll just remind you of that. Veteran Service Report, that is on your desk, and that is there for you to look at. We don't need to take any action on that. Now, we're ready for the approval of the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion that we approve the Consent Agenda?
No.
Motion from Mr. Good, second, from Mr. Foster. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, like sign. Okay. We have approved the Consent Agenda. Report of County Officials, that is on your desk. They have provided that to you. Notaries, Public Election, and Surety bond approval. Those folks are on your desk. That list of people are on your desk. I need a motion. Mr. Palmroyd, your second. Mr. Raine, that is on the board. Notaries on the board. Mr. Commissioner, please record your vote. All 23 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? Unanimous, Mr. Chairman. All right, that is unanimous. Report of standing committees. First will be the Committee on Committees. Mr. Good?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee on Committees, met in regular schedule June 15th, meeting 9:00 to 6:30. There was a forum called, we had one motion to group approve, which is on the members' desks, to reappoint Commissioner Paul Goode, the Resource Authority, and group approve for the Civic Service, Terry Minns, I'm sorry, Terry, correction on your paperwork, Jerry to Terry. Health Board, Senator Hail needed to come on, person position, and that from the county executive and committee was Andrew Vinnie. Library Board, Cameron Stokes and Jessica Hunter. Interruption Board, Martha Akins. That was motion approved and approved unanimously.
Okay, we have a motion to group and approve. Is there a second? Ms. Lamar, Mr. Guthrie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would you mind kind of make a motion to separate number two, because I want to abstain from that one as far as the Civic Service, which is a committee, separate that?
Yes.
No objection for the maker until we have the second.
Okay, all right. Any other comments, questions, and no one in the queue? We'll do that by voice vote. There's been a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, like sign?
No.
Okay, we have a no from Mr. Vaughn. All right.
The leftover, Mr. Chairman, something that was mentioned by the committee.
All right. We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, like sign?
No, abstention.
We got an abstention from Mr. Guthrie. Okay, thank you. Education Committee, Ms. Lamar?
No report.
No report. Mr. Graves, Highway Commission?
No report, Mr. Chairman.
No report. Mr. Raine, General Operations?
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor, Public Service?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add to the airport authority deal with the reopening after three months of shutdown of the airport. The T-Dot, in their wisdom, decided to shut it down, renewed most of the old runway. Runways now been completed. Now, Tennessee's Nashville, Gallatin is now a higher-rated runway, so we can take the bigger jets. It now opens the door for more economic development for bigger companies to fly the bigger jets in the area, and we should be very optimistic. Progress of the airport can continue on as much more expansion, even expansion of Gallatin Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Thetner serves on that board and is also a pilot, so thank you, sir. Or did serve on. Emergency Services Committee, Mr. Guthrie?
No report, sir.
Thank you. Legislative Committee, Mr. Harris?
Your side is fifteen oh six dash oh one, adopting international code council building value, valuation data tape, somebody.
Okay, we have motions, are second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Taylor, Commissioner Bill Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold, hold. We got to put, okay, I'm sorry, we got folks in the queue. Commissioner Mo Taylor?
Yeah, this came out, from what I understand, just a legislative committee. If you recall, Mr. Chairman, I'd asked that this be discussed quite frequently, or maybe I didn't request it to be discussed frequently, but I asked that it be openly publicized and discussed as much as it could be, because this affects anyone wishing to build a home, anyone, well, it's just, it's got a lot of stuff in it that doesn't need to be discussed here tonight. I would like to move that we refer this back to the committee.
Okay, there's a motion that we refer it back to the committee. Before you do that, the county attorney wants to address something.
This is not the final passage of this. The way these rules work, they have to be placed in the public for viewing, and then in 90 days, we come back and discuss. The state has asked us to get a new set of codes started. We were supposed to have done this by the end of June. We can defer, refer, table it, whatever y'all wish, but I would prefer, please, that you just go ahead and let's get it out there for the public, and then we can come back and have more discussion on this at a later time.
Mr. Holt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I thought a motion to refer was not the right.
Well, as the lawyer, she has to give us a lawyer's perspective of where we are, and Mr. Holt has an input into that too, as a county executive. Mr. Holt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The county attorney is exactly right. We are out of compliance. We have been working on this. When this has gone through our planning commission, and if we do not adopt updated codes, then unfortunately, we will not be able to enforce codes across the county. We're already out of compliance. The fire marshal has visited my office with the county attorney and has basically informed us that we've got to update our code system.
Okay. And I do think, we had a motion, but I'm not sure I got a second on your motion. So is, and is there a second for his motion?
Sir.
All right.
We're also kind of backwards. This first topic is the building code costs is separate and completely different from the building codes.
I'll change my motion in group to refer both of them, but...
Well, we're not discussing the second one yet. We can only do the first one. When it comes up, you can make that motion. So we have a motion and a second. Any more, can we discuss? Under the current rules, that can be discussed, okay. Are there any other comments about this? There's some people in the queue, but is this, Mr. Comenden, you're not, you're not on the motion, on the amendment, or Mr. Graves? Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a comment on that.
Yes, sir.
Approving this table, that we, are we approving everything that's on the table, including the chart of loans, the form where to, form where to...
Determine the rate.
Determine the rates and cost of permit.
Yes, yes, we would be.
The amendment does not go into effect until at least nine plus days.
But we are proving...
It still has to get approved immediately.
We're proving for it to be, I think I understand it this way, that we're proving it to be for public to respond to it, to look at it, that it's out there, and that in 90 days, we will be voting on this. But all we're doing tonight is approving that we are, we're heading down that road to do that, and we'd like to get public comments on it. Is that correct?
So if I'm understanding right, if we approve the rate of zero, point zero, zero four, we're giving the citizens this county a tax increase?
Not tonight, in 90 days if we approve it.
If we approve.
If we approve it in 90 days.
Is this 13 vote? What's the fee?
This tonight, this one, this one, is it tonight? It'll take 13 votes on the main motion. It'll take 13 votes on the amendment. Yeah, so we're talking about both of them, it's 13 votes. Okay. Mr. Hinton, you're there. Do you want to speak on the present motion, or do you want to speak on the main motion?
Present.
Okay, all right, you're on.
If I'm understanding right now, if we approve this tonight, that is to put it before the public for their comments?
Yes, sir, for them to examine.
What protocol will be put in place to allow that to happen?
It's a good question.
The rules are placed in the county clerk's office as well as in the Codes Department, and then anyone who wishes to come back when this is brought back, which will be September or October, will be allowed to bring forth issues that they have. In the interim, if y'all want to have some sort of special hearing or special meeting to discuss it, you're able to do that, but it just, the law requires that it be, that a copy be placed in the county clerk's office and in the Codes Office for review by the public.
All right, I have a question. Will it be brought back to the Legislative Committee or to this full commission?
It'll go to the Legislative first.
It'll go to Legislative first.
Don't you believe that anything is, that carries the impact that this does, that, and we know who our builders are because we've got them licensed, don't you think we ought to absolutely set a meeting time and advertise the fact that there's going to be a discussion of these rules? That this is going to, this is going to possibly affect not only the people that are in business of constructing, but also the people that are buying houses, because I suspect it will increase the price of housing, and I don't, I don't think this ought to be allowed to get before this body for a final vote without us doing maybe a little beyond reasonable to notify these folks that these things are being considered.
And we can do that. That's up to this body, but recognize that if we do not adopt something ourselves, the state will come in and make us follow whatever rules they decide to put forth, and that's going to be a whole lot stricter than what's in front of you now. So just keep that in mind.
Yeah, I'm not implying by any stretch of imagination that we would ought not to pass this code. I am implying that... I am implying that everybody that those codes are gonna affect ought to not miss the opportunity to, to give comment on that. You, you can't operate the county without codes. Some of these codes are great. We don't have codes now mechanical. You, you can, you can go out here and, and buy you some insulation and start putting and heating it there when nobody comes by and looks at it. And that don't need to be so. So I'm for codes. Codes are necessary. But it, it, it will impact a lot of people, and I sure don't want to get in the conversation where somebody says, "I missed that notice in the paper, and I didn't realize until it already passed." So I'm just saying, I, and, and I don't know, I don't know when to amend the amendment.
And, and that's what I was gonna say. I think with what you're saying there, it would have to be a, a motion, and I think we need to take care of the other motion first. And then, once we get through with that, and if you want to make that motion that we have a public hearing, then I think we could discuss that at that point.
Thank you.
That be okay?
Yes.
All right. All right, anyone else on the amendment? Uh, Mr. Comendant, have you spoken yet on this? Okay, go ahead.
There, you're on, you're on, okay. Maybe just, uh, help clarify to, to everybody here. The planning commission cannot, these are two separate items, as far as I'm concerned. Adopting the valuation data table, and then the next one, adopting the 2009 and 2015 international residential codes are complete. The first one has to do with how much the permit, or how much it costs you when you go into the codes office to get a permit. And I don't know about everybody else, but the times that I've been in there, I have, um, been concerned about, uh, how much money, how much out-of-pocket money, no matter, you know, that it did cost. And, um, you know, we got this sheet, uh, about the cost in, uh, the county, Galton, Hendersonville, Portland, of fifteen hundred, twenty-five hundred, four thousand square foot house, you know, different houses. But added to that, I also have, um, where, um, like, I've got all of the cities around and the counties within a, maybe about a seven or eight county area. Some of them have impact fees, some of them don't have impact fees. Some cities have impact fees that go with the county impact fee. And, in other words, a building permit for a two thousand square foot house could be anywhere from things like, uh, forty-seven hundred dollars, that's with all the fees added to it. No, I see one fifty-one hundred dollars, uh, down to seventeen hundred. But in, but anyway, Summer County, as far as the building, uh, building permit fee is probably the, one of the cheapest ones. And I do realize and know that, uh, the state has, has put upon us to do mechanical and preliminary codes. I understand that, and I do understand that this office will have to hire more inspectors and then, um, you know, planning and, um, codes has been split, and... But anyway, I, I definitely, uh, want us to, you know, take a good look at this. I, I'll go ahead and say, what I would like to say is that we lower the adequate facilities tax.
Okay.
Why can't?
You have to completely obey it.
But anyway, if we could lower it to like fifty cents, then, uh, the schools, you know, I, I, I understand that the school department gets the adequate facilities tax, but they also get the liquor tax that has been a new thing that we've just found that would offset that much money. And, uh, and it's still, when you walk in that office, the coast department would still get their money, and the builder or the homeowner would still not be out any more money. Anyway, just a thought.
Okay, let me, let me remind you that at this point, we are debating whether or not to refer this back to the committee. Now, once we discuss that, once we vote on that, then we can come back and we can talk about, we're, uh, about the, the, the pros and the cons of, uh, of the particular, uh, resolution. So at this point, is there anyone else that wants to speak about referring it, uh, about referring it back? Mr. Vaughn, you haven't talked yet.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, the concern I have is this moment ago, I heard that if we refer it back, then, uh, we cannot enforce the rules. If that's true, uh, what rules will we enforce if we don't, and we pass this?
That is a legal, uh, question. Uh, Mr. Hope, you want to answer that question?
I can absolutely answer that. We already have negotiated with the fire marshal and the state. If we don't pass something very soon, we're already out of compliance. We told them we would, we would come up with a solution in six months. It's beyond that scope. We've tried. We will have no codes in the county, none. You can build anything you want, any way you want, anytime you want, anywhere you want. That's a disaster. We are now operating under 2006 codes that has expired. The other cities within the county are either under 2008 that will expire soon, or the 2012 or the 2015.
Okay, thank you.
No, I'd like to hear from the attorney, if I don't mind. Because I, my question is, I'm hearing, I'm hearing both sides here. I'm hearing one say that we're not adopting this tonight. But if we don't adopt it, we won't have any rules to live by. So that's, I'm just trying to get some clarification. What rules, if we're gonna, if we're gonna adopt this in, say, ninety days from now, what's gonna happen to the next ninety days?
As long as we are moving forward, the state is going to cooperate with us and let us move forward. But if we don't adopt something, because it takes ninety days, a minimum of ninety days to pass new building codes. If we don't adopt something and keep the ball rolling, the state could come in and they can either say, "You don't have codes," or they could come in and say, "We're going to enforce the codes that we see fit." And that could be the entire 2015 code, including all of the energy code, including all the special swimming pool codes, sprinkled homes, all those things.
Totally understand. And I think I understand that if we're moving forward, if we're making progress, then we can continue under the codes that we're doing now, which means we do enforce codes
Correct.
For the next thirty to ninety days.
We'll, we'll continue to operate under the codes we presently have until we get these updated pieces.
I just want to make sure I have some clarification. So in other words, what we're saying is to do what my fellow commissioner over here, uh, says, it wouldn't hurt anything to put it off for thirty days. As a matter of fact, that would give us some time to do what my other fellow commissioners probably want to ask to do every minute, and that's to give some notices to some, to some builders to be in here and board surfing before we do anything. Is that correct?
That is correct. Let me make a statement. If we don't have something on the table, what's the point of having a public hearing? We need to at least put on the table for comment the rules. If we just say, "Hey, we're gonna adopt some rules. There's a nine version, there's a twelve version, there's a fifteen version, the, the rules are this thick." You can't have a public comment on something that you haven't at least put before the public. That's why you have that, this ninety-day comment period.
But it sounds like to me we're already adopting something if we put this in play.
No, we're adopting what we're going to put before the public.
We're heading down that road, though. Uh, is that gonna, will it take the change going down? You just told me several versions of, of the planning code. That's what I'm hearing you say. So if we, if we continue, if we go down this path, how are we gonna back up and go down another one if the majority of the builders, the public, don't want us to go down that path?
Well, and that's where you get into the public comment period. For example, let's talk about the fact that the two thou, your codes can only be seven years old. You may have some builders that come in and want us to continue on with the 2009. You can do that, but next year, you'll be doing this again. Um, there are parts of swimming pools that are in the 2015 code and how you handle swimming pools. We've pulled most of it out. If someone wants us to go back and add that back in, we can add that. It's gonna continue the process, though, if we can have what at least we've started as the base out there for the public. If, if you just don't adopt anything, you really haven't done anything. We can go have, you know, we can go in theory and talk for six months. That's what, that's what's been going on for quite some time with the planning commission and with the state. And, and here's where we are. We're trying to get the, get the door opened.
Okay, if there's anyone else on the amendment, if you'll raise your hand. Mr. Hyde has not said anything yet. Go ahead, Mr. Hyde. I'm trying to get the ones that haven't talked yet first. Go ahead, Mr. Hyde.
Before I vote, I'd like to, uh, have a question answered that will clear up some things in my mind. What is the specific law that we're talking about here that requires us to adopt codes? Can you give me that specific law? Because it's a very serious iss, issue for the state to be, uh, assuming authority over the county. And, and I want to say also that I own a piece of property in East Tennessee in the Clinch Mountains in a very depressed county. And if every county's supposed to have building codes, they better get up there very quickly. It's, it's in a great need. So what is it that requires us, what, what is the law that requires us to have building codes?
It's Title V, and it's, it's 52101 et cetera that goes through that. Um, Mr. Hyde, why some counties, um, don't have it?
Speaker.
The state's goal is for every county to have codes. Obviously, some of the little depressed counties don't, and the state is trying to remedy that. I don't have any control over the way the state does that. What I was told was, we were geographically convenient, that if they, if we didn't have some sort of codes, they could use us as an example, because many of the people that worked for them lived in this county. Whereas up in East Tennessee, that's not the case.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hyde, you have anything else?
Uh, uh, and, and with whom are we dealing in the fire department? Is there a person that we're dealing with?
The state fire marshal.
Uh, who is that?
Gary. Gary Paul. Gary Paul.
Gary who?
Paul.
That's all.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Taylor, go ahead.
Well, I, I started something here, I see. Uh, my intent only was, if I could act over what the commissioner from the second district that sits on that side of the room said. That was my intent, is to get it out there in front of the public, make sure that the public is able to digest this, tear it apart. Because you, I deal with code books every day in, in my business. That's, that's the governing volume of what I do. And, and you've got to be careful when you go to adopting code rules. You've got to be careful, because the, the way you comprehend the sentence and the way somebody else comprehends the sentence can get you in all kinds of trouble. So my intent was to refer it back, to make sure that the public, whoever you are, if you're a home, if you own land and you want to build, you know, this is gonna affect you. If you're a contractor, it's gonna affect you. I, I just want the public to know what's going on. That was my intention. If this is just to get it in front of the public, which I, I don't like the way that's done. You gotta get something that, I understand, you gotta have something to vote on to be able to talk about it, to do this and do that. You could say hypothetically, this is what we're gonna plan on doing. You need to come and listen if this affects you. So that was my only intention. I withdraw my motion to refer if I can, if I can assure myself and, and the constituents of this county that they're gonna have a chance, and the public, to come forth and hear those code rules and how it's gonna affect the constituents of this county.
So you're telling me that you're going, that you want to withdraw?
Yes.
All right, but there's a second. Mr. Graves, do you agree to that? Okay, we are. So now we're back on the main motion. All right, uh, so we're gonna talk about the main motion. Uh, Dr. Bill Tate.
Mr. Chairman, unfortunately, the state of Tennessee's requiring us to do something. We have, we don't, we don't have many options. We do have the option of, uh, uh, of taking out some of the things we don't want at this time. So it's prudent for us to adopt it, move it on, and let it out, let people look at it. Then we have a chance to cut, cut and paste what we don't want. And that's why we move it on with this, this whole, whole thing. The committee has agonized over it. They've taken out things. Going back to committees would be, the result would be the same. So I, I would like to call a question.
We're not, we're not going to go back to the commission. That's been withdrawn.
I know.
Now we're discussing the amendment.
I'd like to call a question.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Raine. Okay, so we're going to call for the question that is non-debatable. That will take.
Mr. Chairman, you got people.
And we've gone over that, and I understand what you're saying. But, once they call for the question, if there is a second, then we have to vote on it. And I understand there are people in the queue. I understand that. Well, we're rest, all right, uh, he, here's what, we're, we're restating, uh, that, uh, well, we're calling for the question. Uh, but the first thing we're gonna do is to vote if we need to call the question, and then I will explain what the question is, okay? So at this point, are we ready?
Yeah, that's gonna take two-thirds of a vote.
Two-thirds? It'll take sixteen votes.
And then, if it's approved, we'll immediately vote on the resolution.
Right. But I will explain what the resolution is so that everybody understands, okay? The call for the question is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-three votes are entered. Anyone not voting, wishing to vote, anyone wishing to change your vote? Receiving fourteen affirmative votes, the call for the question fails to carry. We're back on the main motion. Okay, and next on the queue is, uh, Mr. Foster. Okay, Mr. Comendant, you're, you're in there, do you want to speak?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, anyways. But what I would like to do is change the word in this 1506-01, adopting to examine. Second.
Okay, there, there's a motion that we change the wording in the resolution. Say that again.
To, from adopting to examine.
Examine.
We have to adopt. We could say that we are adopting for preliminary passage, but we, we have to adopt building codes. You can't, if we examine, we're back to where we were with Mr. Vaughn, where we're just having a meeting, everybody meets together to talk about.
Mr. Comendant, I think that what the attorney tells us is that there would be ninety days, whatever we put in that resolution. Would that be accurate, Madam Attorney?
Well, but it's, adopt is a, is a, is a, is a term of adopt. You've got to adopt.
Okay. So you've made a motion, or do you want to continue with that motion?
I know if we say adopted, then that's what we're doing.
Not if we put a preliminary consideration.
For preliminary consideration.
Okay, without objection, we will have that put into the resolution. Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Hinton, you're in the queue.
Uh, do I need to add an amendment that there will be public hearing?
Yes, if that's what you want to do.
If I could recommend, let's do that as a completely separate resolution, because what concerns me is we've dropped these backwards right now. We're, we're doing tables, and we need to be doing codes, and really, we ought to get what we're gonna have on the floor done, and then I want to do is a separate new resolution if we're going to have this public hearing.
I, how am I gonna know if I'm gonna get it passed or not if we pass these other two? Can I do it before we vote on the other two?
If you want to do that, we'll do that too.
Thank you very much.
But I want to do a separate resolution.
It, it is my motion that, if it's in order, that prior to voting on 1506-01 and 1506-02, that we pre-agree that there will be public hearings relative to both those issues before their final adoption. And I'm gonna use the word adequate public hearings, and I'll leave that up to somebody's discretion to make that call.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, we have a motion on the floor, ready?
We do have a motion, but this is, would be an amendment to that motion.
So second half, it's a second.
No, it's a separate motion.
Just in Tennessee, separate.
This, this chairman, we're putting that motion, and we suspend, we'll go ahead with the first and the second, come back for a vote. And here, the commissioner, for, and his mother. And here, the commissioner for, and his motion is a separate resolution. That's okay from all here.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, I'm going to, we're going to let the county executive, Mr. Executive, you want to go to the podium there? We'll let the executive try to sort this out for us.
Let, let me say this. I appreciate where you're all coming from. We've got to do something. What I suggest is this. Erica Porter and our codes director, Marshall Wright, have been working on this for several months. This started back six months ago when the state fire marshal came in and said that we had to adopt a certain code and we had to sprinkle. And I told the fire marshal that we weren't going to do that. I lobbied our legislators. They changed state law that took the sprinkling out of the code system. We need to adopt something tonight, and in 90 days, that's the way this works, and that's what the law director's telling you, you're reviewing it. You have public review. You can amend, you can repeal in that 90 days. You don't have to pass. You do not want to wait another 30 days and have the state come in and pass some kind of ominous 2015 without opting out of certain parts, like sprinklers, like the energy code that's going to require the developers to build walls that are super thick and add a lot of insulation with special windows. It'll drive the price of housing up. To reference Commissioner Hyde's point about smaller counties that do not have codes, yes, you're right. They do not have codes. It is a disaster. People build sheds and live in them. They haul double wide or single wide trailers together and put roofs on them and live in them. They can put them anywhere. They can't restrict anything. That's not what we want here. That would be chaos. And so all I'm suggesting, suggesting tonight is to let Ms. Porter and Mr. Wright inform you of what's taken place, and you can vote on it in an informed manner. I think some of the motions being made are not on the mark, and I am very concerned that you postpone this and then either the state step in and say, you're going to adopt a certain code, or you have no codes at all and you can't do codes enforcement. So if you would consider letting those two individuals speak, especially Ms. Porter and Mr. Wright, that's the expert on this, I would truly appreciate it.
All right. Thanks, sir. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, which one? Ms. Porter, you want to speak first?
If you don't mind, Mr. Wright and I are going to stand right there.
That's fine. Marshall.
I'm going to speak first, and I'm going to have Mr. Wright clarify if I don't understand something. As a layperson going through this process, I'm in the same boat as y'all in that I didn't come from a building background, a realtor background, and I've had to be educated as to how these things work. And what happens is you have counties across the state, some have building codes, some write their own building codes, and some adopt the International Code Council building codes, which are pretty much the only ones that exist, pre-published these days. Places like Davidson County write their own. We're really not in a position to do that. We don't want to have none. So we have the ICC codes here. They are published once every three years. Right now, we're on the 2006s. There are 2009s available, 2012s, and 2015s. You have to stay within. How many years? Seven years current of the, of the currently published code. So right now, the 2015s have been published. So if you subtract seven from 15, which is 2008, you have to at least be in the 2009 codes. The 2006s are no more, and there's no such thing as 2008 because they come every three years. So our proposition is to adopt certain sections of the 2015 codes. The biggest problem that came out during this, this whole vetting process, we did have a process. We didn't just up and decide to spring this on anybody. I've talked to all kinds of building departments in different counties, Mr. Wright has, we've had it front of the Planning Commission. I've had conversations with individual commissioners about this. I actually know builders and have gotten their input, and I think other people have. What it is, is the biggest concern was the energy code. In 2009, the ICC added an energy code. Before then, there was no such thing. The 2012s came in and made that energy code very strict. The 2015s came along and relaxed the energy code just a little bit, but not enough for the folks in this area. So what Mr. Wright and I came up with is to adopt the 2009 residential energy code, which leaves this thing called an R-value at what it is right now, which means you can build a house with a two-by-four stud. You don't have to make it any deeper. And that's what we're going to do, is adopt the 2009 residential energy code to give us a while to do the research that everybody's talking about because we can't stay in the 2009 energy code very much longer. If the trend with the codes continues, the 2018 codes might relax it even more. They might realize that you've got warm climates that don't need an R-value like you might need in Minnesota or North Dakota. They might come along and relax it a little bit more, but that gives us some time. So that's the energy code. Then you've got the residential building codes, and we have opted out of fire sprinklers, which a bunch of folks actually went to the General Assembly and got a law passed allowing us to opt out of residential sprinkler systems. So no builder is going to have to force their home buyer or home builder to have sprinklers in Sumner County. Those are gone. We've also taken out the entire swimming pool code and reverted back to basically what we have now, which is you need a fence, a gate that locks and lashes on its own, and you have to have some type of suction control so babies, pets, and things like that don't get hurt or sucked in into swimming pools. So that's really not changed. We've opted out of, of something that has to do with retaining walls. We don't inspect retaining walls. We didn't feel like it needed to be in there. We opted out of the energy part of the 2015, and like I said, we put in the 2009 to keep it status quo. Sprinkler systems again, and really, that's it. Then you get to the commercial codes, which commercial permits are about 2% at very max of what we actually issue permits for. So really, in Sumner County, we're issuing residential permits. So you've got the 2009 energy code, which allows the builders to continue to use the same size stud that they've been using since time. And we've opted out of all the fire sprinklers. We've opted out of the owner of swimming pool codes. And also, there's something called the blower door test, which is where they just bubble off a house and see if there's any air getting out. And there's also a duct test. We've opted out of both of those things, which those three things, the end of the R-value, how deep your wall is, or what counts to your insulation factor, the sprinklers, and the blower door test, and the duct test were the four biggest cost factors and what we all heard the most about from the builders. So we've actually already gone in and taken care of those things. And then pretty much with the commercial code, there's, there's really not a whole lot that you can do with that. I recommend that it stay the way that we have it. Mr. Wright, you want to add anything?
Say I'm impressed. I learned about the code over the last few months. Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing me to stand here before the decision as senior governmental body. My honor to be here to see you. Just ago, what Mr. Todd said, we've been working on this for a long time. He didn't quite give us enough credit because we've been on this for 13 months now. I think he said six months. It's been a long time. The thing is, we got two agendas items before you. One is the building codes, and the other one is the building permit fee data table. That data table by itself just gives us an accurate cost of what a square foot, to build a square foot house in Sumner County is. That's, that's all that is, is give us an accurate estimate of cost. When people want to look at our books and know how many millions of dollars of construction was done in Sumner County, we have something accurate to give them. 0.004 multiplier. And that's what's going to determine the cost increase of the building permits. Whatever you decide is, is certainly, you know, I appreciate the wisdom of this council. And I think personally, we're doing a great job, no matter what, y'all voted on the building codes. But anyhow, that aside, the building codes and the structure cost data table, they're kind of built hand in hand. If I can just take a couple minutes to talk about the building codes. I don't want to sound redundant because I know the legislative committee heard some of this, but just give a quick summary of where we're at in the building codes. In 1999, there were three legacy building codes across the United States, Southern Building Codes, Boca, which is building officials, and CAO, Uniform Building Codes. They all three merged, become the International Code Council, the ICC Council, the ICC codes, which is used throughout the United States, probably 75, 78% of the United States uses the ICC code in a lot of countries, you know, across the world also use them. The only really other code besides ICC codes now is the NFPA codes, and that is the fire codes. They have to do life safety when it comes to fire, hazardous combustion material. Commissioner Ben Harris, he knows a lot about the NFPA codes. They're, they're the fire codes. As far as the building codes, it's the ICC building codes. There's no more Southern Building Codes. There's no more Boca Building Codes, which was Midwest and Northeast. And there's no more UBC, which is the Western Codes. They're all three legacy codes are the ICC building codes now. That's what we use. We don't have any choice but to use them. Right now, we're in the 2006. It would be our recommendation to go to the latest published code, which was the 2013. We've got countless hours of research comparing the 2012 international codes to 2015 international codes. And the 2015 codes are less restrictive than the 2012. We are, we're pro-business. We, you know, we don't want to do anything that would restrict the growth of Sumner County. This is a great county, and my opinion is any other country, Sumner County, Nashville, because I've been in different places. And a lot of it, I think, has to do with the governing body of Sumner County and Galatin and Ennis fields, who took wise decisions, in my opinion. And I would also recommend that we go to the 2015 building codes because we would not have to revisit this again for another nine years. It's not fair to the building inspectors, it's not fair to the contractors. If we have to change the building codes every three years, eight, six years, let's go to the less restrictive building code, just the 2015, and be done with it for, for nine years. We won't have to revisit this anymore. Also, every time you adopt a building code, it's expensive. You've got to buy a minimum of six sets of building codes. The staff has to be trained, the contractors have to be trained, what's in that building code. The longer the inspectors can stay in that one code cycle, the better they're going to be at the job, the better they're going to be able to understand, the better they're going to be able to apply and interpret that code. If we're changing codes every three years, or eight, six years, it's not fair again to the contractors, the board, the staff. That's really about all of it. We're, we're very excited about what's going on in Sumner County. We've got 25 to 30 new home applicants right now in the pipeline. As soon as they get through getting their environmental set tank approval, they get their permits. So at least in the near future, the economy and the building in Sumner County is very bright. And I think it would be justice to the citizens if we can be efficient and, and be educated in code, working properly. That's, would be my recommendation, go to 2015 codes.
I'd also like to point out, if y'all will look at the resolution, all this language that has the Tennessee code annotated, that comes straight from the code. There, Ms. Denton said that adoption is a term of art, and it, and it is, but it's very clear from the Tennessee code annotated that if you'll look on the second page, it says, "All codes suggested for adoption shall be made available for public inspection in Sumner County Clerk's Office, et cetera, et cetera, for a period not less than 90 days." So technically, this is a suggestion for adoption. We can have public hearings. If something pops up that we need to, we need to amend the resolution, we can do that. But this is the beginning of the process, and it's, it's by statute. It's not something that we made up. As far as the building permit fees, what y'all set those at is your decision, but I do believe that we need to use a table that's in date, and the one that we use right now doesn't even exist any longer. So that's really all I have.
Just one last thing. That is a state unfunded mandate requiring us to bring in a common new capital inspector. And when you consider the multiplier that you vote on eventually, I ask you to take that consideration onto yourself, the cost of over here, the department.
Okay, thank you. But, you know, it's, it's very obvious that this is a very important issue because we're talking about state mandates that we have to look at, that we have to abide by. And we're talking about builders, and we're talking about buyers who are going to have to fall under those state mandates in terms of what we adopt. So that is very, very important for, for this county. Mr. Hinton, I would like to ask, I understand what you want to do, but I would like to ask that if we could go ahead and focus on these two, and then once we do that, then we can come back and address your resol-, your, your motion that we set up some kind of public hearing, because I think that, personally, I think that is important. So if you'll let us address these two, and then let's come back and address that and decide how we would like to do that. Are you okay? Was there a second? I don't think there was a second. All right, would, Mr. Todd, would you, would you withdraw that? Okay, all right. So now we're back on the main motion. Yes.
The only thing, only concern I have about, about that, you made a motion and an amendment, and we have a second. The only concern I have about it is in order to do what you're asking, I think we have to go back and get a two-thirds vote to add something to the agenda. Is that correct? That to suspend the rules in order to add something to the agenda at this point? I'm a little bit concerned about that. I think that the maker, the maker and the second needs to be aware of that, to the, to the.
Okay, so what we will do is, we will, then, then we will let them make their motion without objection. Is that right?
I think we could, I think we could solve this really easily, is that without objection, the county executive will set up these hearings and, and get it started. We'll organize it through his office.
I will address that if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, please.
I would be honored, and I would be committed to this body to ask for a public comment period. And so that's no problem. We can do that. That's what we want to do. That's the right thing to do. We just need to move forward in some form so we can come back in compliance. And we need and solicit public input. They may not like everything about it, but we've got to adopt something. So we've either got to adopt the nine, the 12, the 15, or a hybrid. And.
But not tonight.
But.
Not tonight.
Tonight, we need to adopt something so, so we can either, in 90 days, fully adopt it, amend it, or repeal it.
Right, okay. I think we all understand that. So based on that, then what I will do, I'll go back to the queue. Mr. Graves, you're in the queue. Do you have anything you want to share? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, but we're, we're on the adopting the data table right now, right?
Yes, 1506-01.
I would like to amend that motion or the resolution, saying instead of the 0.004, we're dropping it back to 0.002. That, that will help the citizens and the people that building houses. That'll help them on the cost factor.
Okay, I think that would be done during the 90-day period. I think that's when we would address that. If we start going back in and trying to pull everything out this evening, we could be here for a while.
That's only, that's the only thing that I want to change. If we don't change now.
Yeah, but what about others? There may be others who might want to change something else. There may be others who might want to change something else.
Mr. Chairman, the finance director said if you change that table to that extent, you'll bring in less money in fees when we reduce what they are today. And that will affect the revenue stream from the budget that you're considering.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, do we fully fund that budget from permits?
No. No, we will actually be raising what our revenue is.
Okay. What would it take?
We would have to go back to her, she tried to, Erica, before she's coming, trying to do what she's right here.
You're potentially bringing in less revenue than what you got in right now. We'll cut that table in half.
Mr. Graves, again, let me remind you that that's what the ninety day period is for, is for us to address those issues. So that we can make sure that we are not creating another problem by trying to cure something tonight.
I will change my, to zero zero point three, point zero zero three.
I'll say seven, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We have a motion and a second.
Okay.
All right. Discussion. That's an amendment? All right.
Can you get a question?
Yeah, let him. Yeah. Okay. If anyone wants to speak on the amendment, you may do so. And I can't call for the question because you've got to be in the queue to call for the question.
I hear you. It is. Point zero three.
What was it? Point zero?
Zero three.
Zero three. Mr. Becker, you want to speak on the amendment?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I just question from this long.
What does that, what would that do to any protected revenues that are currently in the budget?
Can I make a statement on this? Let me explain...
I've got to know that information before I...
Let me explain the way these fees work. You can cover the entire cost of your code's department with these fees. We don't come anywhere near that. That means all citizens are footing the bill for these new rules and regulations that the state is putting on us. This slight increase that we're putting in here just simply means the person building the house is going to be paying for that new code inspector that's going to be looking at the mechanical and those type things. This isn't going to create any great source of income. And I'd really prefer that we leave it at the four and let David get those numbers, and we do that as part of the discussion process.
Okay. Any other, if you have anything on the amendment, if you'll raise your hand, I'll recognize you. Mr. Vaughn?
Thank you, Chairman. The only, from what I'm hearing, how can it decrease a revenue stream by changing it if we're not going to put it into effect for ninety days? In other words, all this, from what I'm hearing, is a recommendation. You tell me you're not going to increase anything for ninety days. Is that correct or incorrect?
We're adopting a different code valuation than the old. Not that we won't change it, but if you go out there with the two, it's going to be harder to get it back up to the four. We'll just...
Well, if it's going to be a four, you can't get it back down to a two. I mean, so...
We'll draw it.
Chicken or the egg. My point is, is that the statement that was made a moment ago is going to affect a revenue stream, is not that we're not going to have it into effect for ninety days, is incorrect. Because it's not going to happen for ninety days, and you're going to change it between now and then. So why don't we change it to begin with?
Well, and let me remind you, let me remind everybody here, that if we were to vote on this this evening, that does not mean that in ninety days, we could come back and change it to whatever else we wanted to do. So we would be voting on this, but it could be changed over this ninety day period.
And I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, but my point is, is that are we putting this in place today, or are we waiting ninety days?
Ninety days.
Like we said, would. I just want to make sure we're clear on that. So anything that my fellow commissioners were to put in there, whether it be zero zero one, it wouldn't make any difference. We could change it in ninety days.
It will impact your budget that we'd be voting on tonight.
It wouldn't because it's not in there.
There are existing fees around there. Your existing fees, if you go to your pension offering...
This doesn't take effect for ninety days.
You already have $165,000 for existing building fees. If you drop it to point zero zero two, you're probably going to bring in less than $165 that's already in the budget. If you bring it to the three, you're going to bring in closer, a little more, and four's going to bring in more. What you're doing is you're messing with existing fees that's been in there for several years also. So if you lower the multiplier down low enough, you're not going to bring in existing fees that are in the current budget.
I must be totally confused, Mr. Chairman. What I'm hearing is, it's not going to happen for ninety days. Is that correct or not?
It will not be implemented for ninety days.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Graves, on the amendment.
On the amendment, I would draw my motion. If somebody would tell me why, if we're not adopting this tonight, why would it affect it?
Okay. You can take what that... You can tell why. Go ahead, Mr. Hope.
What you have is you've got an existing fee structure. If you come in and take the new structure and you lower the existing fee structure that's already in your budget, you're going to bring in less revenues. The point zero zero two is going to bring in potentially less of the fee structure in place right now that's outdated and has to leave.
And in ninety days? Mr. Vaughn is exactly right. Mr. Vaughn is. Here's the deal, though. Whatever you pass tonight, it's much easier to go down from that, amend that down. It's going to be very difficult, if you pass a fee tonight, to amend it up. So you know you've got ninety days for passage.
Basically.
So you're much better off to pass what's presented. You can amend it within that ninety days, you can mend it down. David, today, if we pass this today with what's in the current budget, how much of a deficit would we be in that department?
Right now, I have to, we can bring in $165, and that department's about 500.
You'd still be about $200,000 in deficit if you changed the fee structure today.
The only reason I bring up the fee structure is because what you're potentially going to do is go to a point zero zero two multiplier, have hearings and show it to the public. We're going to come back in. You're going to adjust it down, you're going to be shorting your budget, have to adjust it back up to make your budget after you showed the builders or wherever else the potential fee structure. That's the reason I'm bringing it up tonight. Because if you put point zero zero two in, and we do the calculations, and you've got $165 in your budget, it brings in $130, then you're going to have to increase the fee structure, make the difference, or come in with a shortage in the budget.
After ninety days.
After ninety days. And then for your years forward, and also, you've also remember, you've had to bring in new inspectors to meet the new codes. So you're actually going to have a larger amount covered by property tax than in the past.
So we're bringing in one and four, eight?
Yes, sir. They requested several new ones, but they only had one funded. They said they're actually still in need of additional employees.
This one mechanic.
That was the one mechanical, and they say they're actually in need of one more in there, and several more in planning.
With point zero zero three.
We would vote.
We would definitely bring in a new one.
Mr. Graves, will you open? Do you still? Yeah. Do you still want to have your amendment, or are you going to withdraw your amendment?
I'm going to withdraw.
Okay. Withdraw. Who's the second? Where's the second?
I'm the second, Mr. Chairman. I will withdraw, although this commission should have no problem with this.
Okay. Thanks, sir. All right. So that's been withdrawn. So next in the queue is Mr. Driver, speaking to the main motion. Mr. Driver?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I just, I hear lots of things going around here today. I think from a lot of folks, what I'm hearing is they want to make sure that we do let the public know about this. What I heard Ms. Denon say was that we're going to post this in two offices here. I know a lot of those builders and folks come in here, but I'm sure there's not a lot. I did not hear about anything being put in the newspaper or anything like that.
I guarantee you, been newspaper.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because I did not hear that when we asked about it.
Well, they may be in the newspaper, but we're going to put it in the newspaper. Yeah. Mr. Hope has agreed to have the public hearing. And we will advertise that. I'll assume that we would advertise that, right, Madam Attorney? We will advertise that.
That's all I need to do.
Thank you, sir. Pointing that out. Mr. Hinton?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, sir.
For the last thirty-five minutes, I've been wanting to vote for both of these with an amendment to require public hearing.
And we've agreed.
And that's, no, we don't have that. We have a commitment out of an elected official. I want this body to be part of what we pass, that we require as a body, the public hearing. I want that in the record. Now, please tell me from protocol how I can accomplish that, and I'll make a motion according.
No question.
All right. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Where'd that come from? All right. So we have a second? All right. Madam Attorney?
I would stick on the end of both these resolutions, and it is requirement that we have a public hearing.
Hear, hear.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We have, next lead. All right. Mr. Palmero?
Call for the question.
All right. He is in the queue. Mr. Palmero, we have one more person.
I know that, but I'd like to call some.
All right. We got a call for the question. Is there a second?
Second.
Where's the second? Mr. Taylor. Okay. We have a call for the question, non-divisible. We will put that on the board.
Is there a limit on, since we've already had a question on this one? Mr. Chairman, is there a limit on the number of questions? Since we've already had a vote on this call.
Okay. I got to get on board. Do you just... I didn't have too long left to call for the question. Just a minute, Arthur. On the board is the call for the question on 150601 dot B. Second call for the question on board. Each commissioner, in favor, please record your vote. Twenty-two votes are entered. All twenty-three votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? Receiving the necessary two-thirds vote, the call for question is approved. Okay. We're ready to vote on the resolution. Resolution 1506 dash O one. Adopting the International Code Council Building Valuation Data Table with understanding that it will be advertised for ninety days, we will have a public hearing. The resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-three votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? The resolution receiving twenty-two affirmative votes, it is approved. Mr. Harris?
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. We're back to you.
Resolution 1506 dash O two, adopting provisions of the 2009 and 2015 International Residential Code. The 2009 deals with the energy efficiency, if I'm not mistaken. The 2015 takes care of the rest, and the exclusions are listed there. Saw so much.
Okay. We have a motion. Second, but Mr. Comenda, any discussion? All right. Here we go. Madam Attorney?
I will add throughout the body, in the title, that this is for preliminary consideration, and will also add at the very end, that this matter will also be considered an adequate public hearing.
Thank you. Mr. Graves?
I just want to ask, do I have to put heat in there in my house?
No. Do you have to?
Is it part of the code?
I'm not sure. Yeah.
How many, and also, how many homeowners can you build your own house if you had to have a contracted residential?
Mr. Graves, those are questions that are, that would probably need to be handled with the, when we have the meetings. Or you could talk to them after the meeting.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Hinton?
Does this get the same with them, that we guarantee public hearing?
That's what she just said.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Mr. Mulcahy?
Question?
Yeah. If I can, for Madam Attorney or whoever can answer. Who sets the rules that we have to be within so many years of a code?
The state, yes.
So we can lobby our state legislators to change those rules, correct?
Yes.
Because anything involved can be changed.
Sure.
So we can put it be within fifteen years, if you get enough votes out of Nashville.
Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Comenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I'd like to say is, I know Mr. Marshall and Erica's worked very hard on this, and by being on the planning commission, it's been through, been through the planning commission for two or three months. And I have went in Mr. Marshall's office, read over a lot of the 2012 Residential Building Code, and I am in total agreement with this resolution. And we've opted out of the things that we need to opt out of, and I think they've done a really good job. And the only thing I was concerned with before was the fee schedule, and I just feel like every time I open my light bill or my phone bill, there's been an added fee or something's went up. And sometimes I feel like we do the same thing to the public, to different people. And that's the only part that bothered me, and I would like to see us work on that as we can.
Okay.
As far as this one, it's awful.
Yeah. And they did a good job, many, many hours, putting this together. Mr. Palmero?
Call for the question, please.
Palmero, we have one more.
I understand that.
Okay. We're going to call for the question. Is there a second?
Okay.
Second for Mr. Foster. Okay. Put it on the board. We need to have just an automatic call for the question. Can't voice vote. I was in, I did that once before we got in trouble. Can't do it. All right. We have, on board will be a call for the question on 1506 O two. 1506 O two. Each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-three votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? Receiving the necessary two-thirds vote, the call for question is approved. We are moving back to the resolution 1506 O two. Okay. We're ready to vote. It is now on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote on 1506 O two. Twenty-three votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? The resolution is approved with twenty-two affirmative votes. Okay. Next item, Rules and Procedures Committee, that is my group, on your table. I was chairman of that, and we have met several times. The committee was Ms. Kemp, Mr. Langford, Dr. Bill Taylor, Mr. Kevin Palmero. We had several meetings. It was very open, and we had a lot of healthy debate. We listened to each other. We listened to fellow commissioners. We listened to the public. And we went through and made changes that we felt like would be for the smooth and efficient operation of this commission. I have had placed on your desk a summary of the major rule changes. Let me read those to you rather quickly, so that you will all understand that these are the guidelines that we would have.
It would fold the duties of the Public Service Committee into the General Operations Committee. Effective September the first, 2015, the Public Service Committee would be abolished. Secondly, the Commission Chairman and Chairman Pro Tem would change the, would change the September election. The newly revised documents change the time to August first, except with a new commission term, because the new commissioners do not come in until after September the first. Sign-up sheets will be placed on the roster here in this chamber by noon on commission day. Reconsideration motions may be seconded by any member, not just a member of the prevailing side. The definition of refer, defer, and table were added. The Commission Chair or the County Executive can sign the commission agenda. Rules and amendments approved by two-thirds vote. Rules adoptions would require a simple majority. Ad hoc and subcommittee definitions placed in the body of the rules, taken out within a year, would be referenced to the 2002 Financial Management Committee, because that will be changing. And the Rules and Procedures Committee duties will be folded into the Legislative Committee. Those are the changes that were recommended by the committee. Each of you received that in an email, I hope. And I want to thank Ms. Denon and Mr. Porter and Mr. Kemp and his office as they helped us go through this, put it together. It is in a much better form than it was before, and we appreciate their work. So, that committee approved it to bring it to this body. And now, at this time, this body will have an opportunity to discuss those recommended changes and other changes that may not have been approved by the committee. In the queue first would be Ms. Krueger. Oh, well, I need a, okay, thank you. I need a motion and a second to adopt these. Mr. Palmero makes the motion. Mr. Goode is second, and now it's open for discussion. Ms. Krueger.
I'd like to make an amendment, please, to these rules changes. I understand the Rules and Procedures Committee folding it into legislative, because they don't necessarily need to meet every week, or every month, I'm sorry. But they do still need to meet occasionally, and I would like to see us have a subcommittee of the legislative committee that doesn't have any chair people on it, chairman on it, that would approve rules and procedures changes first before it goes to legislative. That way, it's a little less, what's the best word, popular kids in town relating everything. It's more balanced, and I think it's more fair. And I'd like to see us have this, we just passed out this subcommittee of seven people that are not chairman of committees beyond this subcommittee.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Taylor. Discussion. Would that be what?
It would meet as needed as opposed to every month. It's not supposed to be needing every single one. It would meet as needed.
Rules and Procedures don't, they don't meet out every time anyway, so.
But you would have to cancel it.
Okay, if you have any comment on the question, you'll raise your hand, because we have others folks in the queue. Yes, ma'am.
I guess maybe I don't understand what Commissioner Frum's nation. What's the difference between what you're proposing and what's being done here? I don't get what you're proposing.
Cancel a meeting every month if you don't need to meet. They would just be called to meet as needed.
Okay, so are you wanting to set up a separate body or to make a change to the current Rules and Procedures Committee?
That's a great question. I mean, I don't.
Let me, let me explain how it came this direction. This is a, is basically a subcommittee of legislative that will meet when needed for rules. It has a specific body that's chosen, but it will answer back to legislative and then would come back to the full commission. So, basically, by the time anything gets to the full commission, it will have been vetted by just about everybody on the commission.
Mr. Rain?
It is, but ad hoc is a term of art in Robert's rules, so this is like a subcommittee.
All right, anyone else with your hand? All right. It will take sixteen votes. This is an amendment. It will take sixteen votes. The amendment to create a rules subcommittee is on the board. Each Commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-two votes are entered. Anyone not voting, wishing to vote? Anyone wishing to change your vote? Failing to receive the necessary two-thirds vote, amendment fails to carry. Okay, seeing no one else in the queue? Oh, Mr. Hyde?
There you go.
Well, it's, it's, okay.
It's on that.
Thanks. I had a question about one of these that I can live with any of these, even though I think some are, you know, the prevailing side issue. But the issue of this body, this is a legislative body. The county commission, the county executive is the executive branch of county government. And I feel very strongly, just personally, about you being able to sign off on the commission agenda. It's our, our agenda, the commission's agenda. And it's not that I don't trust the county executive, but I think it should be as it's always been. You set the agenda for this body, and you have a rubber stamp, as I did. And you can always have a real stamp. It is not a big issue. But I really think that you are the only one that ought to set the agenda for this body.
Okay, you want to make a motion?
I would make a motion that we just make that commission chairman and sign the.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Second from Mr. Taylor. All right, discussion. Any discussion on that? Mr. Becker?
It's not, it's not a term of order, and the special between the committee was what happens if you have a chairman refusing to sign the agenda?
I didn't hear that.
I'm sorry. The committee asked the question, is what happens if the chairman refused to sign the agenda?
For the chairman.
Mr. Hope?
Miss Chairman and Commissioners, I think it's important that there's a safety valve. And what I mean by that is if a chairman refused to sign the agenda, there's nothing any of you could do about it either. I think it's important, if something needed to be addressed, that you always have a second pair of eyes and that I, or whoever serves in this role, be able to sign off on that agenda. I don't have a vote. I've never vetoed anything that you've passed. I think it's only reasonable that the chief operating officer of the county be able to bring something forward for consideration by this body. And that's, that's all I'm asking, and I think that's reasonable. And I don't think that is something that takes control away from this body. I think that's something that's prudent. I think that's something that is reasonable. And I think that's something that you would want as a commissioner, because I'm here every day on the front lines, operating the county. And I wouldn't want to try to overpower a chairman of the commission. But I think at the same time, if I feel, or any executive feels it's important enough to be on the agenda, it should be addressed by this body. Thank you.
All right, anyone else on the amendment? All right, Mr. Taylor?
Well, with that being said, to act, to comment, you know, why would it, if not, if the chairman doesn't want to call the commission meeting, why would it not fall down to the next person, the chairman pro tem term? I mean, we could write the rule that said that. I'm sure we're in Rules and Procedures discussion. I mean, we can make up a rule if we do anything, I guess, as long as it's legal or legit. So.
So, you would, you would have to make an amendment to the amendment?
I'll amend the amendment.
Is there a second? His, his, his motion is that in place of the executive, the county executive, that the chairman pro tem would also be an alternate source to sign the agenda. All right, we have a second. Discussion on that amendment. If you have, raise your hand if you want to talk about it. Mr. Hyde?
Miss Chairman, I've been up here twenty-two years, and I never remember a time that there's been confusion over the chairman and the executive working together. I don't know where on earth this came from. But I'm just jealous of the fact that this body keeps its authority to set its agenda, or whoever is setting up there, you or anyone else. By law, not by commission rules, by law, this is a non-issue, because the county executive can at any time, if he has an issue, call a special meeting of the county commission, and you cannot, but he can. So, that's a non-issue.
Okay, thank you. Question on the amendment to the amendment. Mr. Becker?
So, I understand. So, we're removing county executive and adding chairman pro tem?
Under this, this amendment.
Okay.
Amendment. All right. Okay, seeing no one else, we will vote on the amendment to the amendment. The amendment to the amendment is on the board. Each Commissioner, please record your vote. Anyone not voting, wishing to vote? Anyone wishing to change your vote? Failing to receive the necessary two-thirds vote, the amendment to the amendment fails to carry. We're back on the First Amendment. Okay, and the First Amendment was? The chairman signed the agenda. That's just the chairman would sign that, and no one else. Okay. All right, if you have any comment on that, raise your hand.
Was just the chairman?
Just the chairman would sign the minutes. Oh, not the minutes, the agenda, sorry. And the minutes, too, but the agenda. Okay, for signing the minutes? Okay. Yeah, let's not, let's not confuse. There's two people that signed the. I'm ready. Oh, Mr. Palmero, are you speaking to the?
Are you speaking to what?
Okay, go ahead. All right.
But one question, one, has it ever happened? Two, I know it's a rubber stamp, as the fellow commissioner said, but what happens? And I know we run this committee, but we've talked about a lot of stuff tonight. If the chairman is for no reason other than medical, unavailable to sign, it's not really a rubber stamp unless you say sign. And I think, from being on the committee, that was where we were getting at. If there was a pressing issue there, that we had a failsafe that we could meet if we needed to meet. I just want to be clear of what the thought process was. It was, hey, what happens if whoever the chairman might be at the time is in a situation? Where he can't, yeah, incapacitated, where he can't, where he can't rubber stamp it? So, I think this makes sense.
Okay, Mr. Hope?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know who stated this. One of the commissioners is right. I can call as county executive or the county mayor can call a special call meeting anytime. But if the chairman's the only one that has authority to sign off on the agenda, all I can do is call a meeting. There would be no item on the agenda, so that item would be removed. So, by default, the chairman has, that's the way it's worked before. Chairman will not sign off on the agenda, then the item wouldn't be on the agenda. So, that's a one, one person check.
Okay, Mr. Hyde?
If the county executive calls a special meeting, as the attorney well knows, it is a noticed meeting. If there's an issue he wants brought to this commission, he can notice that. What the special meeting is, is issue whatever, and call a special meeting of the commission.
That is in the call when it comes out.
That's right.
Let me put the, Mr. Hyde has a point on that. Where this issue arose is what happens if the chairman is incapacitated for the regular scheduled meeting, or if a chairman disagrees with something that is being placed on the agenda, which is not an issue we've had here. But I think the county executive has been to meet meetings with other county executives where that has been an issue in the past.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
But if the committee chairman don't show up or don't sign off, the vice chairman.
But it's not a matter of not showing up. It's a matter of.
Signing off.
Signing off.
All right, Mr. Palmero? Most of the time, that is sent out in an email, and then you check your email, and then you send back to whomever is putting that together, and it is hounded through the email. You don't have to. Uh, no, according to county attorney.
He has, he has his part. He has to sign, but he's not the sole signee.
You talking about for a committee, or you talking about for the full commission? The full commission, okay. All right. Mr. Graves?
Miss Chairman, has this ever happened in Summer County before, or we didn't have a meeting?
Not in my, not in my turn, if that's mine.
Okay, I'll call for the question.
Call for the question. Well, there's no one else in the agenda, so, in the queue, sorry. Agenda. All right, no one else in the queue, so we don't need to call for the question. All right, we're gonna vote on the. We are voting on Commissioner Hyde's amendment that the chairman approved the sign off on the agenda, not the chairman or the county executive. Is the amendment on the floor? Not, not, yeah, just the chairman. Yeah, the rule would stay as it is. The rule would stay as it is currently. That is correct. But it would change what is proposed. Okay.
If you vote yes, you're voting for the whole state.
That is correct. Yes, ma'am. That is correct. It would, yeah. All right, then. We ready, Mr. Chairman?
I'm ready.
The amendment is on the board. Each Commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-two votes are entered. All twenty-three votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? Receiving eight affirmative votes, the amendment fails to carry. We're back on the main motion. All right, Mr. Palmero? Okay, we don't? Yeah, one person. We have one person. Still want to call for the question? Well, that's true. I agree with that. All right, we've got a call. We, yeah, we got a call for the question, and we have, who seconded that? Mr. Foster. Okay, no debate. Here we go. Mr. Becker, I'm sorry. It seems like every time you get ready to speak, we have a call for the question. That'll take some. All right, we have a call for the question on 1506-03. Each Commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-two votes are entered. Anyone not voting, wishing to vote? Anyone wishing to change your vote? Receiving thirteen affirmative votes, the call for the question fails to carry. All right, Mr. Becker, everything, they want to hear what you have to say.
So, it's a real quick, well, the fourth from the bottom one. Can we, what's, it'd be nice, maybe, if we had like the current rule in front of us and the new rule, but anyway. So, what is the current rule on the fourth one? So, what is actually changing with the fourth from the bottom? The rules amendments? The rules amendments approved.
That's the existing rule as it is right now. Passes before you start the term, it takes thirteen votes to pass it. There are extra, any amendments to the rules, take two votes.
Which is the current rule?
Which is the current rule.
So, okay. So, why is it on here?
Sorry, yeah.
I thought it was current rule, but I don't know why it was on.
All right, seeing no one else in the queue, we will vote on the motion, the main motion. Main motion is on the board. Each Commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-two votes are entered. Anyone not voting, wishing to vote? Anyone wishing to change your vote? Receiving seventeen affirmative votes, the resolution is approved. Okay. Next on the agenda, uh, on my list. Yes, sir. I agree with you. Let's take the five-minute recess. We'll be back in here at nine fifteen. Thank you, sir. Nine fifteen on the clock on the wall. All right, we're ready to get back into order. Mr. Goode, you are chairman of the Budget Committee. Come on back in. We need to get started. Oh, I'm sorry, all right, sorry, all right, uh, who's the vice chair? Mr. Lamar? Okay, uh, we're ready now for financial management, Mr. Lamar, as vice chair, Mr. Lamar, do you have anything? Okay.
Um, the audit findings were reported and addressed, everything has been corrected. The two thousand fourteen, fifteen fi- uh, findings must be reported following the end of fiscal year, and that's all for the, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Uh, budget committee, Mr. Goode?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, as a note, I'm sitting with ten fifteen oh six oh four, information purposes on that, fifteen oh six oh five, approval of nonprofit chair of organizations estimated, assumed.
Okay, uh, let's slow down just a minute, so your, 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 your motion is for, uh, fifteen oh six oh four?
Oh, four was removed, that was the informational only.
That's for information only.
And that?
All right, so now you're doing fifteen oh six oh five.
Fifteen oh six oh five, I think the second was, it was the second.
All right, there was a motion, and who's the second? Mr., Mr. Foster? Okay, we have a motion, the second.
To approve as presented.
Okay, Mr. Taylor, you're in the queue.
Well, we can remove that before the meeting starts, oh, four.
It's just there's information purposes, it does not, it cannot be voted on legally before July first.
So, I can't fix it tonight?
Okay, come back in July. All right, uh, anyone else in the queue? All right, seeing no one, let's vote.
Nonprofit resolution is on the board, each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-two votes are entered, anyone not voting wish to vote, anyone wishing to change your vote? Receiving nineteen affirmative votes, resolution is approved.
Mr. Goode?
Mr. Chairman, the county general's, uh, fifteen oh six, that showed three, none three approval, but county general schools highway, county highway, presumed assumed.
Okay, we have a motion, uh, second, second from Mr. Taylor, Mr. Bill Taylor, uh, discussion. Uh, first, in the queue is Mr. Baum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, it should be prudent, I think, uh, given the quantity of information we've got here, I guess, that we defer this to ten days, pass continuation budget, and, um, go for that.
Okay, we have a motion that we, uh, that we defer this, and, uh, Mr. Taylor, uh, Mr.
Mo Taylor, seconds that?
No.
No discussion?
Defer is non debatable.
Okay, non debatable, so let's put it on the agenda, or on the board.
All right, we, we have a motion to defer for ten days, the, uh, motion to defer is on the board, each commissioner, please record your vote.
That would take sixteen votes.
Twenty-two votes are entered, anyone not voting wish to vote, anyone wishing to change your vote? Receiving seven affirmative votes, motion to defer fails to clear, to carry.
Okay, I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Renew your motion.
Renew your motion. Okay, that's a new, or renew, and a second, uh, Mr. Hinton, you're next.
I have a question, uh, both, uh, schools and highway have embodied in them, like maintenance of effort from the state, do we know whether or not we moved funds from categories that don't require that into categories that do?
Mr. Goode?
I am the director of the city, the chairman.
All right, Mr. Finance Director, you understand the question?
Yes, sir, for the highway department, it's actually a five-year average on the local revenue, so, they've actually met the five-year average based on their projections, and the maintenance effort for the school is based on your budgeting of local revenue from the prior fiscal year. And it does exclude capital items, but I would have to defer that to the director of schools if he's made any such changes.
Okay, Mr. Hinton, does that answer your question?
That's fine.
All right, Mr. Baum?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, I don't know that we've ever done this before like this, putting them all together and voting on them all at one time, uh, I think it's gonna make for, uh, I don't know, for, up for debate tonight or not, but, uh, I think it makes debate a little bit confusing when you start discussing all three budgets at the same time. Is there any way to separate these out, one on one at a time? That's my question.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Baum, and a second from Mr. Taylor, and your motion is that we pull each one of them out separately and talk about each one?
Maybe someone prove, Mr. Chairman, we got, um.
Okay, but I understand, that's what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure we understand. Okay, there's a motion, there's a second. Now, we, uh, that is.
We can discuss that, right?
We can discuss that, all right, raise your hand if you want to talk about it, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Mo Taylor?
I think really, that's one of the only prudent choices that we have to make here, because I don't recall ever doing that before, because there was a commissioner that worked for a sheriff's office, who's no longer a commissioner.
Who would always ask the sheriff's office be separated from the county general, because he had a direct conflict. There's direct conflicts here tonight, there's, there's not people that work.
There's just indirect conflicts, because they had the job of member of that.
Okay, I just want to clarify that.
Okay, all right, uh, anyone else on the amendment, raise your hand, we'll discuss it, we'll give you a chance, if not, we're ready to vote on the amendment to separate, uh, each of those, uh, departments.
The, the amendment to separate is on the board, each commissioner, please record your vote.
It will take sixteen votes.
Twenty-two votes are entered, anyone not voting wish to vote, anyone wishing to change your vote? Motion to separate fails to carry.
Okay, back to the, uh, main motion, Mr. Graves?
Um, Mr. Chairman, can I, can I pull one of the budgets from the list, or not now?
Yeah, it did not split, so we, we've already been down that road, so, now, you can talk about it, so I, I guess at this point, it would be you to vote for all or none.
All or none.
Yes, sir.
I would like to pull the election commission, I put that in a form of, a budget in the form of a motion.
Second. All right, we have a motion to pull the election commission, second from Mr. Taylor, all right?
Uh, my reason, I'd like to.
Yes, go ahead now, we're in discussion, Mark, go ahead.
My, my reason behind that is, uh, over the last few years, they shut down, uh, not my only home precincts, but they shut seven or eight in the county down, uh, for some of them was not reasons that was valid, uh, I'll use best page, message churches one, uh, and I've got an email, I don't have it with me, but I do have a copy of it, from which actually, uh, saying it wasn't handicapped accessible and so forth, that didn't follow all the rules, that they, uh, didn't want to have it there, that was not true. That's my reason behind this, uh, and she has the, but her budget has changed and not showed any savings from there. Now, that's just my point of view.
Okay, uh, anyone else want to speak to the amendment, uh, to the amendment to pull the election commission? If so, raise your hand. Mr. Taylor, Mr. Mo Taylor?
I think we were apprised of some information here tonight that's gonna affect all of us, no matter what part of the county you're from, if they're only gonna hold early voting in Galton, because if you live down in Hendersonville and you want early vote, you're gonna have to drive up to Galton. If you live up in Westmoreland, you're gonna have to come to Galton to early vote. I'd heard of this last year, and, you know, we had back earlier in the year, the convenience voting program, or the resolution that we sent to the state, and I thought that took some time. And I don't, I don't see any way why we keep messing with where people vote. I mean, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. So, I would like to, to have that budget brought back in and, and discussed very thoroughly, and see what the money savings were by closing those early voting places, I mean, because we want people to vote, it's like we're doing everything we can to say, hey, we don't want you to vote, let's do everything we can to deter you, to keep you from going and voting. And, and like I said again, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Uh, anyone else want to speak to this? All right, seeing none, we will vote on the, uh, amendment to, uh, pull out the election. Before we do that, is there any commissioner here that knows, because I'm not familiar with that, this is the first time I heard about it tonight myself, have we eliminated the satellite voting, do we know what's going on there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if that's a question, I said that, but it's the same, and the people having to drive a quarter mile after to vote.
Okay, all right. Okay, uh, Mr. Driver, you're, did you want to speak to this before we vote?
Well, actually, I was in the queue for that thing, but I would like to say, uh, we, you know, we heard from this actually earlier in the year, where they were trying to get the mode voter thing, we voted for that, state of Tennessee decided to put that off.
Right.
But, we heard from a citizen tonight talking about this, and this is something that I'm also very interested in here, but the problem is, the only information I have is from somebody that came up from the public and said, oh, you, I have no idea whether this has actually happened or not, I don't, we haven't heard from this actually, I, I'd like to know something official about that, before we make a decision to pull this out of the budget.
Okay, Mr. Rain?
Uh.
Push it, yeah.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, and this discussion is, is good discussion, but it's not at the time to have the discussion on the budget, I don't believe. Um, if we have some issues with, with the election commission has done, and if we feel like, if some changes are made, we can always vote to add more money to the budget if that's necessary. But, at this point, I don't think we have to get, we need, you know, we don't, we need to pass the budget tonight, and we can't pass the budget and just pull this one little bit out of it. So, I believe that, uh, we need to go ahead and pass it tonight as it is, and if there's some discussion about the election commission issues, they can be done, dealt with at a later time, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Foster?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is a question for the finance director, what is the elimination of the satellite, um, areas in, reflected in this current budget, or is it the way, the way it was before?
Mr. Long?
Ms. Ashley presents her budget to us, so I have not heard anything about the elimination of the satellites, and there was nothing mentioned in the budget committee that I recall, or the amendments.
To me, that's a, that would make a big difference, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Mo Taylor?
I think we can pull it out, I think we should pull it out, and I think we're not doing the citizens of this county that, that, that are not gonna be able to early vote, we're not doing them a service by not pulling it out.
All right, Madam Attorney's gonna make a, gonna make a comment.
We've already voted to not break up the budgets, we can pull out this section, but you're going to have to do a continuation budget, otherwise, her phones get turned off come July first. So, recognize that you can't just pull it out and not make some decisions, her employees have to be paid, she has a statutory salary, their computer lines have to be paid for, you, you've got to address that.
Okay, Mr. Goode?
Um, Mr. Chairman, uh, Commissioner Rain, that spoke prior, uh, has spent many years, uh, on the election commission, uh, and I too, uh, do not believe that that is the case on the early voting, uh, but let's be honest, this commit, this, this commission, this body right here, if there's any confusion, can debate that we, uh, we will have early voting, uh, if we, even if we have to add funding back to it, uh, I mean, no one's gonna argue the fact that I, I like the idea of precincts, so, um, uh, and I, I agree with, and we, we should start cherry picking budget by budget for continuation budgets, so, per Mr. Rain and per Ms. Dent, I think we'll improve this budget standpoint, um, and, um, and we can address this with ample time before the next election, and the city executive wants to comment.
Yes, Mr. Hope?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I think this can be easily addressed, I think it's gonna be difficult to try to pull her budget out, and if you do pull it out, what are you gonna do, add money to it? Because reducing the budget is not gonna help early voting. Uh, I truly believe it would be prudent for all of us, because early voting is probably where half the people vote now, that we reach out to Ms. Ashley and have her come back to budget, if the budget needs to be amended in some way to ensure that we have early voting across the county, I think that would be a wise and prudent thing to do, rather than trying to adjust a budget on the full floor of the county commission. Uh, you know, early voting is not just popular, it's extremely popular, and really, about half our registered voters now that vote, vote early, and the other half vote on election day. So, I agree, uh, we need to, uh, get to the bottom of this matter, but at the same time, I don't know how you're gonna address it by pulling her budget out and adjusting it in some way, I don't know how that would resolve the issue.
Okay, Mr. Driver?
I'll be alone.
Pardon?
The budget will be there, it's out of there.
Okay, all right, for the amendment, Mr. Graves, it's on the amendment?
What's that amendment?
The amendment is to pull out the election commission, uh, out of the budget.
Yes, it is.
It is on, okay.
One is, uh, maybe, I'll wait till the main motion.
Well, now, okay.
Is that?
Now, this is a motion to pull the election, now, once we get off of that, then we will be back on to all three of those, uh, all three of those.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we talked about early voting, also, the seven or eight precincts they shut down too, also, uh, I had people in my district, I, the third district was hit harder than anybody, if you want to say, three precincts out of five, so, two-thirds of the people in my district, uh, the third district, that ain't my district, the third district is driving somewhere else now, driving further. You got a lot of elderly that drives further. Lot of people early vote, I understand that, but you're, you're decreasing the votes for some people. People can't get rides, I mean, I don't care anybody who votes, but they, they don't participate, they're young people, it does the same effect to them, we're trying to get young people to vote. Young people don't vote no more, a lot of them. But, that's just my thing on pulling the election commission out, it should have been done three years ago, and not pulled out, but talked about before the seven precincts was removed from the county. We got, we got people locked to voting, I locked, I voted all my life, except for one time, at my home precinct. It wasn't 'cause I didn't have a ride to Galton, or wherever, satellite vote, I had that right, but that was my place to vote, and that's the reason I voted to, thank you.
Mr. Driver, you're in there again, though?
No.
All right, Ms. Crook?
I guess we're trying to talk, we're debating pulling of just the election commission out.
That's right, that's the amendment, that's what we're voting on, to pull the election commission out.
But, we could pull them out, and they still get voted on correctly, correct, right? They get voted on individually.
We have to, continuation budget and county fines, or we have the precincts all throughout the budget, we have to.
I mean, but if you pull them out, we're still gonna vote whether they pass their budget or not? No? I mean, I'm confused on how we, pulling it out still sounds like we're still voting on it, we just voted it separately, to me.
We would vote on it separately.
Okay, so it'd still be voted on, so I'm not sure what the.
Tonight?
Right.
But it would just be voting on for a continuation, not for what they have in there until they came back and reported on what the satellite voting, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, that's the way, so that's what the amendment, that's the way the amendment's worded, okay, I just, what I was trying to clarify is, how is it worded? Because to me, I was thinking we're still gonna vote on it, we're still gonna vote on it separately.
Mr. Palmroyd?
I, I, I'm good, I just was making sure that, being new up here, that by pulling that out and that we voted on the continuation, what we did, it didn't affect our ability to pass the rest of the budget, so I just want to make sure that we're good with that, so.
Madam Attorney, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Continuation.
Okay, then I call for the question. Okay, then I call for the question.
Okay, we call for the questions, your second? Second by Mr. Tate. Yes, there's, I assume there's four, three more people that want to speak on this amendment. Mr. Taylor, no? Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
He wants to, and Mr. Driver doesn't. So he's called for the question, there's been a second, that's not debatable, we have to put it on the board and vote. Yes, ma'am, but we have to go through the process.
The call for the question on the amendment to pull the Election Commission budget is on the board. Each Commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-two votes are entered. Anyone not voting, wishing to vote? Anyone wishing to change your vote? Failing to receive the necessary two-thirds vote, the call for question fails to carry.
So, Mr. Hinton, we want to hear from you now.
Quote, "We need to pass it, then we can find out what's in it."
Thanks, sir.
No, I've got one more thing to say. If you approve her budget, you might as well hush about these satellite voting. Once the budget's done, all your power to influence that group will be nothing. Now, she'll, you can pay her, and she'll open up some of them, but you don't have any bargaining chips once you pass her budget.
The County Executive, I think, has been in contact with the election coordinator.
I have, if you would.
Yes, go ahead.
I talked to Ms. Ashley, I called Ms. Ashley. The decision was made by the Election Commission, which is her boss. It was a four to one vote for the March 1st primary, preference primary, and the August election. The November election will still have satellite voting, but what she informed me was, it's not a budgetary line item. It was a decision on their part that it wasn't effective, because it only, according to the Election Commission, which of course is made up of five people, only increased voter participation in those two elections by one and a half percent. That's the information she gave me. So it will be early voting, satellite voting in the November election, but not in the March 1st and August election of 2016. And it was an Election Commission decision, not a decision made by the Budget Committee.
Okay, we still have some people in the queue. If you're in the queue, and if you're wanting to speak on the amendment, raise your hand. Mr. Graves, or, I just said, Mr. Taylor, you're first. Mr. Maltaler?
I wasn't going to say nothing, but I keep getting information, which makes me want to say something. So, here's something I want to explain if you don't know. Your Election Commission is made up of appointed people by your state legislators and your state election commission. If you don't like how they're doing their job, call your state legislator and your state election commission and tell them to replace them. If you don't like the way your administrator of elections is doing their job, same thing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else on the amendment? Mr. Becker?
So, Mr. Hold, did she indicate the 573 that's in the budget, was this satellite voting changed after this? Does this money include satellite or not?
Mr. Hope?
Going to answer that the best way I can. The Election Commission determines when and how the elections are held. So, apparently, according to Ms. Ashley, there's enough money in this budget for next year's November election, but not enough money to have satellite voting in the March 1st and August election. Now, I don't know exactly how that works, because this budget runs from July 1st of 2015 to June 30th of 2016, so I guess that would only be for the March 1st primary. So, in other words, it'll be early voting, but whoever came down here and stated correctly the Election Commission voted to have only early voting in the County Administration Building, not satellite early voting across the county. Does that make sense?
That does make sense, and let me point out that for this budget here, there will only be one election, that would be in March. Other elections would be after the 1st of July, which would be in the next year's budget. Mr. Rain? You got your button pushed?
Yes, sir. If I could clarify something. The March 1st primary, there's only two things to vote for. It's the presidential primary for Republicans and Democrats, and if either party calls for the accessory property election, that's the only other thing that'll be on the ballot. It's not going to be a full election with everybody's...
And the judge, general session judge.
And general session judge, right. There won't be a full, full with everybody on the ballot. Those are the only, the only things that'll be on the ballot.
Okay, all right, there's three people here, I'm not sure, Mr. Driver, you're, I know, all right, Mr. Maltaler, or you, all right, Mr. Good?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Chairman, like the County Executive taking opportunity, his chairman talked with Mrs. Ashley via text, so it's in writing, if you will, and to his point, it was an election commission decision, it had nothing to do with the commission and/or budget. And yes, this commission can easily, in a future date, but to the Commissioner Rain's point, it's not going to be anything worth going. And they do have the data to show only 1.5% participation. And Mr. Chairman, you and I, I think one day, talked about different conversations with Ms. Ashley that showed the data, but that can be addressed going forward. I mean, a comment was made that, once the budget's passed, it's passed, and to my knowledge, and I've only been here about 10 years, but to my knowledge, I've never had an elected official department having one, that we as a body have not said, we would really like us to take this next step, it's not gotten accomplished. So, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, seeing no one else in the queue, we will vote on the...
The amendment to pull the Election Commission from the budget is on the board. His question, please record your vote. Twenty-one votes are entered. Anyone not voting, wishing to vote? Anyone wishing to change your vote? Receiving eight affirmative votes, the amendment fails to carry. We're back on the main motion.
Back on the main motion, which is 150606, approval of budgets for county general schools, highway fund. And, Mr., yes, ma'am?
Anybody who has an indirect conflict?
We're not ready to vote yet. No, we still got folks in the queue. Yeah, Mr. Driver, go ahead.
That's what I'm, indirect conflict.
Okay, all right.
I just need to state that I have an indirect conflict here, and that I will be voting my conscience.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Maltaler?
We're voting on all the budgets.
That's correct.
All right. So, all these budgets, talking together, is funded by the tax rate that we're not setting at. So the tax rate has a correlation to this, I feel like I can talk about it, it can still be anything, only for take a rest.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Well, we told people at the January meeting that we would address the tax rate. We couldn't do it in January, but we can do it now, but we can't do it now, because we set the tax rate next month. So I was confused, I worked about a half a day yesterday, coming up with the plan, coming up with numbers, digging, because I attended a lot of budget meetings. Didn't get to go to all of them, but I got my notes and my figures and everything from the ones that, that all took place. And I'll walk you through it with me. I came up with places, of course, we're going to have to make tough decisions to implement that plan, but I had a plan to cut the tax rate to 240. If you looked at page 12 of your budget document, your consolidated annual budget, on page 12, there's a bottom paragraph that I think reads something like this. "We have in excess of $4.1 million in debt service that we're available, that's the funding that's coming in with this tax rate." $4.1 million is 10 cents on the tax rate. That's 10 cents, $400,001 penny, we're spending pennies. Page 12, it's not the actual budget, it's the presentations where Mr. Law put together. Page 3, I'm sorry, you're correct. I had something else on page 12. Page 3. $4.1 million is 10, 10 cents on the property tax rate. That's, that's 10 cents. I know we have that out there, that we can, that we're paying interest and principal on our debt. What that also does is that sets up some able to also borrow more money, to sink this county further in debt. I'm not proposing cutting that out completely, because I am conservative, but I'm still realistic, because there is things that can happen that we can borrow money for. So I was only going to cut five of that, which is 2 million. I was going to cut the other five from the schools. And because I wasn't going to cut their budget, because I can, because we have maintenance of effort laws, with our maintenance of effort law, we can cut the school budget 2.5 million dollars and still fall within the maintenance of effort laws. We have a million dollars unbudgeted in the school budget, which is 2.5 cents on the property tax rate. So, we made all the other departments come by, cut most every department in the county's budget, request. So all I'm doing is asking that we cut some of the school board requests. We didn't ask the school board to cut it down. We didn't ask them to take nothing back. I think we were over $5 million out of white, I call it, just call it out of white, out of bounds, with initial request. $5 million was 10 cents on the tax rate, over 10 cents on the tax rate, 12 cents. So, we asked everybody else to cut, everybody else cut. Some didn't cut, because they didn't have to cut, because they didn't have to, they didn't ask for nothing new. When I was up at the budget meeting, they didn't ask for nothing new. Status quo, the only increase they had was in employee pay raises and medical and dental insurance. So I want to put 10 cents of our tax rate back in the taxpayers' pockets and let them spend it the way they want to spend it, not the way we sat here and tell them we're going to spend it. So I had all that together, all that prepared, and we're not setting the tax rate. So, we're going to pass this budget, and I know we're going to pass it, but I just can't not say what I need to say. We have got to stop spending money. Don't call me out of order, because this is just a funny thing that I like to say, like drunk and sad. I mean, if you look at your two school budget presentations, I've got last year's and I've got this year's, I think it's about page 6, they're basically identical. I mean, they're basically identical. I mean, you can pretty much, where the money's going is different, but page 6 is just virtually identical. Where total projected revenue, 212 million, $550,000. Total budgeted expenditures, 226, $570,000. Revenue expenditures. Revenue expenditures. If you're spending more money than you're bringing in, you're going to get another tax increase. Your tax increase is coming. If we pass this budget, you're getting another property tax increase before this term is over. That's why there's a lot of good in this budget, a lot of good in this school budget. I'm not saying there's not. Lot of good things are happening. I'm not against education, I'm against taxes, and I'm tired of paying, and I want one for a tax increase. Thank you.
Mr. Long, you were standing up, was there something you wanted to share?
The only thing I was going to say is the $4.1 million was the actual funds that was for the long-term capital improvements, and the actual long-term capital improvement plan had building, you know, building the calculations that you were to create a reserve of the debt service to help service the long-term debt, based on, you know, when the taxes were raised, there was a table or agreed that actually showed different issues, it's based on the projected needs and the long-term needs. So, if you remove the 4.1, it's going to decrease the reserve to service the debt later, and it's also going to decrease the capacity in the future, so the capital improvement plan will not work without that money.
Thank you. Mr. Baum?
Chairman, if you'd like to clarify the chairman's...
Yes, sir, go ahead, real quick.
Mr. Chairman, to the previous commissioner that spoke, by his own admission, had not attended all the meetings, and was not privy, obviously, to all the information. I may be wrong, but I'm under the assumption...
Excuse me, go with it.
Pardon?
Come on, finish up, later.
I might be wrong, and I'm under the assumption that there were no meetings attended on the school side, direct meetings with the director of schools and the school board. And I do want to point to sound, Mr. Chairman, that the Finance Director is privy to, as well as the County Executive is. There, we took painful, painful request cuts, again, cuts from requests, not what we had it, and the school system had done the same thing. We had communicated with them on the front end, with Dr. Phillips, and we were allowed to be able to come forward with that budget that he presented. So it is not an actual truthful statement, because none of us were there to say that didn't happen. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, Mr. Baum?
Yeah, I was wondering if I could go back in the queue or not, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, you're there.
A couple things. Take exception to the fact that, it's my level of pleasure, Mr. Chairman, to be aware of that. Been up here for 10 years, I've had to sit on one first one, one first candidate. We had budget committee meetings, and I've sat in, I was on budget committee for several years. I never ever talked down to anyone who didn't attend budget meetings, just because they don't have them. I mean, I think that's what budget meetings are for. I think they're supposed to be informed, I think they're supposed to be put out as a, as a recommendation, and a recommendation to the full commission to take it under consideration. So I want to, I want to point that out, first off. You know, I got, I didn't attend any of the budget committee meetings. I would have liked to have got, if we're going to vote on a school board budget of 200 and I think 20 something million dollars, I would like to have had it for Friday, that's when I got it in the email. I would like to digest a little bit more, I've already brought that up, but I swear to God that that would be brought up, and I didn't make any meetings, so I was putting it out there. One of my biggest concerns is I have ladies, little ladies, that are bringing brush pile out the side of the road, and we're telling them that we're going to raise their taxes, but we're going to cut their services, and that's what's happening, and that's what's going to continue to happen. Little ladies, five-year-old ladies, who are going out there and bringing brush pile outside the road, and we tell them, we're not going to pick it up, because we don't have enough money to fund the roads department, but we have enough money to spend several million more dollars in the school board budget. Would also like to point out, and if anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, we're actually going, dipping into the revenue reserves again, to the tune of about 3.287 to balance this budget. I'd just like to get an answer to that, for, I guess, Mr. Long, if you want to, please?
Mr. Long, can you address that?
There has been budgetary disparity between revenue and expenditures for many years. It's been, the years when we break even on fund bouts, it's been running somewhere around about $3.3 million, so...
And I'm well aware of that. It's been brought up and passed. Previous commissions have done this exact same thing. I just wanted to let you know it is still something that we're doing even to today. We're still... No, sir. I've got the floor, Mr. Chairman, and I'm not going to be interrupted.
What's your point of order?
Mr. Long was correcting that, but so Mr. Vaughn's point is...
I don't need Mr...
He gets to explain his point of order. Explain the point of order.
Commissioner Vaughn had said that he made reference that we were still doing the same thing as previous commissions. What he missed, the point was, Mr. Long, I want to address, make sure we're interested, was yes, it is a 3-point million, around 3 million disparity has been since 2008. The difference was, in previous commissions, there was additional revenues added that to get to the $3 million disparity. His point to clarify wasn't done this year.
And that's why I was asking, Mr. Chairman, that's okay. The other things I was wanting to bring out, if I don't get interrupted again. There's a... Looking over the estimated revenues, I'm looking at the the draft general purpose school fund budget. And I'm looking on the very first page, and it says, "Local taxes, estimated revenues and resources summer." Line number 40, $4,000. That says that we are going to have an increase, I hope I'm, I think I'm reading this right, an increase in local taxes of somewhere in the neighborhood of I'm seeing, I think it's about 11% increase in local tax revenue. I'm seeing, I'm trying to find out where that's coming from.
Okay, let's ask Mr. Long. Mr. Long, can you...
Two things. One is this is based on the original budget. You know, if you're comparing original budget to original budget, part of it's to do with the tax increase last year. The tax increase last year brought in a little over $6 million to the general purpose school fund by itself. Plus, there was another $1 million move from debt service. So that was about $7 million there, and the remainder would actually be growth this year in property tax and sales tax and will tax.
Well, what I'm seeing, Mr. Long, is that's an increase over last year's increase. So we had last year's increase. This is on top of that increase.
No, sir, because what the schools have there is their original budget. They did not include those revenues in their original budget.
So you're saying that the tax increase from last year is not included in that $50,033,000, I mean, $50,061,000?
Yes, sir, because the actual budgets were approved before the tax increase. So the budget that Dr. Phillips has presented should be before the revenue increases, unless I'm mistaken, and I've looked at it, Ms. Pritchard can confirm that too. So a large portion of that is actually from the tax increase last year, and the remainder would be the growth in revenues. If that helps clear, because the actual budget was approved before the tax increase, so the original budgets would include the general fund and the GPS would not include the revenue in those.
Okay. And what I'm also seeing here is about another 5% increase in school board budget going up from 235, I mean, 222 to 235, basically.
That'd be something, because I didn't actually prepare this budget, it'd be better for Ms. Pritchard or Dr. Phillips to address that if they were.
Is there a motion to let... Suspender, all right, Mr. Foster, is there a sound? All in favor, Mr. Pritchard, all in favor, say aye. Dr. Phillips?
Yeah, I think we're probably talking about the revenue side, which we put into the slideshow. We always try to do that. I don't know if you have that or not. It's been online since May. So it's, you know, we didn't just post it yesterday. All I'm asking for is the if there's another 5% increase, basically. A 5% increase in your overall budget. Again, you can just do the math there. I have, and I've given you the number. But if that's correct, it's correct. I went to make a word by nothing. I think you're...
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Phillips? Uh, Ms. Krueger?
Yeah, I guess I'm just confused. We're nitpicking the school board budget yet again. We nitpick the school board budget every year. That seems to be a problem. Why do we always want to take from the schools? Every year. I don't understand. Do you realize that's how we got here? We keep taking from the schools and taking from the schools. We're... This is what got us in this mess. This is why we had to have such a tax increase, because we won't fund our schools for years and years and years and years. It's a little frustrating to now be sitting here debating after the tax increase, funding our schools. I'm sorry. That's it.
Uh, Ms. Foster?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I tried to just still schedule out before, because I've done my due diligence. I compared the seven counties around us in middle Tennessee per pupil spending. And in 2004, school year 2004, we were six out of seven counties in per pupil spending. Guess where we are today, Mr. Chairman? We're still six out of seven other counties in per pupil spending. And maybe Dr. Phillips will come back up, but I spoke with him, and just for transparency purposes, the budget process for the county was the department head to bring their request in to the budget committee, and we cut something like $3.3 million out of their request. Dr. Phillips, in contrast, works as budget committee for the schools. They bring, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, but they bring requests to him, and if I'm not mistaken, and Dr. Phillips can correct me if I'm wrong, he cut about $5 million out of new requests out of the school budget before he ever presented to the school board. And as everyone should know, the school board is responsible for approving the school budget. The county commission is only responsible for funding it. So talking about that, if there wasn't any questions or due diligence as claimed, then maybe that should have been directed to the school board. I can tell you from sitting in, and I only missed one meeting, from the budget committee, we spent hours talking about $500 expenditures, $100 expenditures. We questioned just about every increase, line by line, did we not, Mr. Long? Would you verify that? Would you confirm that? Didn't we spend hours questioning every increase that every department head brought to us? We cut it out, and again, I missed one, so I may be a little off. We cut out all new requests and new positions, I think, except for one department. We cut the sheriff's department by over $2 million, which was $11 million, I think, the way it wound up. But we did our due diligence, Mr. Chairman, in the budget committee. And I believe Dr. Phillips did his due diligence for the school budget, as he should. As the department head or the chief operating officer of the schools, I think he did his due diligence. And we're sitting here tonight questioning his ability to manage the schools when the school board, I think the words were, passed it without reservation. Unanimously passed the school board budget. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Goode, you're next, or you're in the queue? Okay, you're right. All right. Mr. Palmroy?
Well, I'll address the highway portion of the budget that was brought up by the fellow commissioner, because that is something, but a little bit misleading how it was said. We've actually allowed funds for the highway department. I've got several constituents that are calling me about that, being a county person. It should be noted that we, as this body, just a lot of money, we cannot make any elected official spend that money the way they want. We can't control that. I've spoke to the highway department. They're choosing not to pick up limbs. I wish they were choosing to pick up limbs. But to frame that as if we raise their taxes and cut their limb surface is simply not true. It's a political statement to change everything. And so I just want to make that clear, that I wish we picked it up too, but I can't make her do it.
Thank you, Mr. Palmroy. Mr. Paul Taylor, you're in there again.
Yes, sir. And I actually addressed that with what I told you before, how I did the cuts. Of course, it doesn't matter, but I just want to make sure that people know that, that I did address that too. And my proposal, of course, doesn't mean nothing, but anyways, it was going to move the highways to .0223. Also, during that, I came up with some questions for our finance director. Page 12.
Mr. Long, would you address these questions, please? Thank you.
If you go about, you go over to your left-hand side, it says county duty.
Yes, sir.
Down at the bottom, it says total revenue, estimated revenue. 2015-16, $50 million, 326, $392. And you go down the next one, expenditures appropriations, $54, $369.
Yes, sir.
That, and that's why I turned to you, because I consider you one of the experts. Expenditures, revenues, expenditures over revenues.
Yes, sir. What's the exact question about it?
Is that active or spending more than we're taking in?
Yes, sir, that's been the case. I went all the way back to pre-2008, and that's been the case for many, many years. Is there's been more budgeted revenues than expenditures, but if we're generally below around $3.3 million, everything else being held true, the fund balance is generally pretty stable.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Chris Tyler's next. Go ahead, Mr. Tyler.
Yes, sir. I've written a couple of questions down as it went along, so I'm going to try and address them all. I apologize if I missed something. For Ms. Harden, I spoke with her and asked her why we weren't picking up brush. Thought that would be the easiest way about it. And what she explained to me was, the issue came up where initially it was something they started doing with the storms. And then, as they made it more regular service for the county, they came to realize that they were picking up more and more and more. And her concern and what they found was that a lot of the tree services, people would have their trees trimmed, edge cut over, however you want to phrase it, and then they would drag them to the side rather than hauling them off, because hauling them off is also a portion of the fee you pay. And they found that people were saving that portion, obviously, by having the city drag them off. And this came about because they realized they were having a lot of calls for brush service when there weren't storms, when it was just from people doing regular trimming. Now, do I think that's the greatest explanation in the world? No, not personally. But it's the one she told me, and she said the cost outweighed what they were doing with it, and that she would rather use those funds to buy hot mix, which goes up with the cost of gasoline and some other factors, to pay for others. So that was her decision to revert those resources from picking up brush to putting more paving down. That was her answer to me. So I give that to you. As far as the $4.1 million for debt reduction, that has to be there. And one of the things we've said is we want to be fiscally responsible. Part of that is having a sustainable budget every year. And by sustainable, what we're saying is that we want one that, barring any tragedies, economic downturn, horrific tornadoes, things like that, all things equal, if we don't really even experience that much growth, we're going to be able to do the same budget next year. So when we put in raises for employees, there was discussion initially, starting at 3%, which would have been fantastic, but we couldn't do that. When we looked at it, and want to say we, the budget committee, and specifically Mr. Long, who does an amazing job, and if you've never spent time around him, he's extremely stingy. So I'll just say that. So anytime it comes up, just know his is always a conservative point of view. But we wanted to go a little bit higher, but there was no way we could do that and guarantee that we'd have the appropriate revenues to fund that next year. And so that's what we looked at. The whole thing was, we knew the magic number for us was 3 million. Now, we talk about the disparity, and the reason I say the $4.1 million needs to stay is that was originally factored in so we could do debt reduction. One of the things we've heard over and over from not only this commission, but also our constituents is we don't want to be in debt. We don't want to have a ton of debt, and I agree. So what Mr. Long's done is they factored it in from the very beginning, a way for us to pay off our debt a little bit faster and to do a better job of it. And in fact, because of their expertise, we cooped an additional, was it $2.1 million when we initially sold the bond statement? That, just because of him and because of his office, they made us $2.1 million extra that was never counted on. So that's the kind of expertise we have over there. So I'm going to question, I'm going to ask, you know, everything about it, because I want to know. And I'm slow, so he has to explain it in very simple terms to me, which is great. When it comes to the sustainability, again, we said it, there's been a $3 million deficit for the general budget for years. The reason is, is because we have amazing people working in this county, these department heads, and they don't spend every dime. I can tell you right now, from being around metro for 20-plus years, you're pushed to spend whatever you can. In fact, the idea is, and you hear it over and over, if I don't spend it all, I won't get it back. And that's true of most governments. For whatever reason, they don't do that here. And it's pretty incredible. They actually turn back in money they don't spend. They don't look for things to buy. They don't look for ways to burn up the money so they can get the same amount. And because of the money they turn back in, because Mr. Long is very conservative in his estimates of revenue, and because we generally have carryover, he knows. And when I say he, historically, it's been seven years now, so I feel pretty comfortable with it, that we'll have $3 to $3.5 million in there. So when we say we're not doing a balanced budget, yes, we are. It's balanced, because if it wasn't balanced, we wouldn't have the money to do the things we need to do. It's a bookkeeping thing. And he's very specific, and he's not going to show it as being balanced unless it is. If we want to get balanced, here's the way to think about it. 10 years ago, whatever the magic number was, we spent up our reserves. And we spent a little more than our reserves. So we carry that negative number over each year. Just like if you ran your checkbook low, and then the next month, you got the same amount of money, same amount of bills, each month you're going to be a little bit low, because you never make up that difference. Counties never made up the difference. We've closed the disparity, and that was part of the tax increase last year. We talked about closing the disparity for both general fund and the school funds. And we did that to a degree. It's not at zero yet, though. And for us to actually have a fund reserve, true fund reserve, at some point, what we have to do is be responsible enough to not spend as much as we take. We're getting there. And when I say that we're getting there, because we're being feasible and we're only doing things we can sustain. So over time, hopefully, we'll be able to whittle that number down to zero. Then you start going the opposite direction, you start actually having built-in reserves that are a little bit higher. But that's not going to happen overnight. It certainly won't happen if you start removing debt reduction. I can tell you that right now. I won't address the tax, decrease, increase, or anything else. That's next month, and that's another dime. But I will say for this, when you look at this overall budget, and Mr. Foster said it as best we could, we went through every line. And people kind of teased Commissioner Becker about asking a lot of questions. What he did in those budget meetings doesn't hold a candle to what, I mean, this is nothing in here. It's one or two questions in here. We're very thorough. And I'd like to compliment the department heads, because they've never had, and they even told us, they said, "We've never had to do budget this way. We're not used to doing it this way." And they were all very responsive. And I'm just going to, two more seconds, I apologize. It won't be much longer. We've talked about a five-year plan and having different ways of normaling need. This county's going to grow by 30,000 in the next five years at least. We know that. Census says it over and over, $1.2 million for the mid-state area by 2020. We'd like to get a lot of that, in a good way. And I'm not talking a bunch of apartments or Section 8 housing. I'm talking about residential neighborhoods, business, and things we want to grow into. Like we said, we've got other counties to see and we want to mirror. Well, our hope is, with this budget process, because we know Mr. Long is conservative and as specific in detail as he is, we'll be able to look next year, and he can say, "Hey, here's what our revenues expect to be. Here's where we may have an increase, decrease, or stay the same compared to this year's budget." Well, having those numbers, then, if we have an increase, because we have growth, hopefully, because we've done a good job of that, the counties or all of our department heads will have said, "Hey, you know what? Here's what we need over the next five years to counter this growth. Here's what we need right away." Sheriff Weatherford's already kind of there. Some of the departments are. Keith Douglas, a lot of them already have, "Hey, here's what we know we'll need over the next two, three years. Here's how much it will cost." What we're going to do is we're going to put that up for everybody to see, public, everyone. And that way, they can look and say, "Okay, this department needs this, this, and this to grow. This is how much it costs for A. This is how much it costs for B. This is how much it costs for C." They've kind of prioritized it. All things being equal, we'll know next year how much extra we do have, and I'm going to be optimistic about it. So then we can look and say, "You know, we've got this much money. We know we need to do these three things with this department." And we can kind of fashion a budget ahead of time. So when people walk in, it's not, "I wonder if I'm going to get this or not." It's like, "I know I'm going to get this because I'm going to justify it." And here's how they want it done. So when I say, and I speak for all of the budget committee, I think I say this, we are really trying hard to implement a process that's more interactive with the department heads, that allows them the freedom to dictate what are priorities and what are needed, and at the same time involve the public as much as we can, so that over the year, they can say, "Hey, this is important now." Because I'll use, you know, Judy and the brush thing. That's important. I don't know about y'all, but I've heard about that more than most anything. And the thing is, if that's that important and the public says that, then that's something that we can look at Judy and say, "How much does it cost to realistically do that? How much will it cost to be able to do once a month? How much will it cost to do twice a month?" And then, as the budget comes around next year, we can allocate those funds for that. So a lot of answers, hopefully, to what we were talking about. The main thing is... The main thing is, these are very sustainable budgets. Sustainable in the sense that unless we have an economic downturn, we're okay. And that's the most important thing we can do as a county right now. And then we can start growing after that.
Thank you. Michelle?
I just want to make a couple of observations. I don't sit on the Budget Committee, but I did attend every Budget Committee meeting that was held in the county offices, as well as the budget meetings that were held at the School Board, because I wanted to be informed, and I wanted to understand why I was voting for the budget and understand the process. And I will just kind of echo a few things. Number one, I saw several times department heads were asked questions by the Budget Committee, and their reply was, "Oh, I didn't bring that number. I wasn't prepared to answer that." Because in the past, they were never asked those specific questions. I feel like our Budget Committee did a great job of asking some hard questions that clearly our department heads weren't used to answering, and so they had to come back and get those numbers or have assistants pull those numbers for them. And I just want to commend our Budget Committee, the time and effort that they put in working on this, as well as our School Board members and Dr. Phillips. And I, again, spoke directly to Dr. Phillips, that he did cut a lot from his budget before it was ever presented to the School Board, and this brought over, and thus brought over to us. And there's also been a lot of comments about, well, there was no questions asked about this, or nobody asked any questions. Just because the questions aren't asked in a public forum, whether it be a committee meeting, or whether it be the full chamber meeting, does not mean that questions aren't asked. I have personally called several of our department heads, or called them outside of the budget meeting, and spoke with them. A lot of times, I can get my answers to my questions better on a one-to-one phone conversation or meeting you outside in the hall after the budget meeting than I can in this public forum. And so just because we don't ask them in this, in this public meeting, doesn't mean that those aren't being asked and answered. We make phone calls, we're doing our due diligence. If I didn't want to do my due diligence, I wouldn't be sitting up here. I'd let somebody else run and take this job. And I would be at home in the bed and tucking my kids in. But I want to be here, I'm doing my work, and I am asking the hard questions. So I just want to say thank you to our Budget Committee, and thank you to our School Board. I feel like this is an excellent budget, and you guys have done a great job presenting it. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gooden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of quick points, and I want to actually, to the point of what Michelle, Mr. Michelle just said, and Commissioner Foster, as it relates to Mr. Phillips and some potential cuts, I will actually, in just a second, Mr. Chairman, under the same suspension, ask him to come back. And I do want to point out a couple of things in advance to him coming back, Mr. Chairman. To the point of the discrepancy that Mr. Long pointed out, which he has this information he should provide for any commissioner that asks for, and I think he probably has, again, as was pointed out by Dr. Phillips, the data and information has not been, I think it was looted to, available since Friday. It's actually been, again, as noted, since April or May. Collectively, Mr. Chairman, between the County Commission, the School Board, and special calls, there has been somewhere in the neighborhood of eleven to thirteen public meetings. And of course, Mr. Phillips, Mr. Long, Mr. Executive, Ms. Denon, has said almost every month, and we've announced every month, they're available for meetings or questions and so forth. One last thing at this juncture, Mr. Chairman, and I want Mr. Phillips to address this issue, but as was mentioned, the discrepancy, in two thousand ten, and Mr. Long has his data, and I'm, I hear you, it is, in two thousand ten, the budget was at three point four discrepancy. Two thousand ten, worst disaster in our county history, most of our life, was the two thousand ten flood. And on the backs of the economy as it relates to the two thousand eight, nine, ten, so-called economic downturn, the worst in our life since the Great Depression, as has been reported many times. So here we are, six years later, with all the growth and everything that's been added, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, I don't have to go into it, in two thousand sixteen, with less of a discrepancy. Mr. Chairman, if you're okay, Mr. Phillips, back, address those two.
If you want to make a motion, we'll vote on that. You want to make a motion to let him come up?
We had the suspension already on the floor, unless there's an objection.
Any objection? Dr. Phillips?
Just really quickly, Commissioner Foster and Commissioner Schell mentioned this. You know, our process is quite lengthy. It starts with principals, and we do meetings with every principal, and that's well documented, and then it goes to department heads. But long, long story short, from the first request, first budget draft, we trimmed off about five and a half million from what they originally requested. We felt like that's what you would want us to do, is to bring in one that is in line between revenue and expenditures. And just really quickly, for, just from my perspective, I've heard comments about the billion dollars that's undesignated. And obviously, that depends on how the fund balance, how the year closes, once we get to August, and we actually close this fiscal year, so that can change up or down. But I think, for me, it's interesting that we've had lots of discussions in my time here about budgets that were not balanced, and about budgets that were balanced. And I don't know any other way to have a budget, as be one or the other. Second thing is, sound fiscal conservative policy, to me, doesn't sound like getting chastised because you're not spending every dime you've been allocated. But I could be wrong. But that's just how we were understanding and proceeding.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Graves?
I just wanted to make a couple of statements on the brush pickup. The Rose Superintendent, Ms. Harding, she, that was the initial start of the tree surgeons abusing the system. That was initial. She decided, as being elected official, that she would move some of that money over into paving, because there wasn't enough funding for paving, what it meant to. She wasn't getting enough money, so she used some of that money for that reason. Now, I don't think you mind, Commissioner Vaughn talked about a lady in his district that was out, older lady picking up. Some people don't have the resources to pick up in rural. It is not like living in the city of Galton or the city of Hendersonville, where they have those resources more for the next thousands. Now, the, she has, we have, I think Commissioner Hinton made a comment about to parse storms and stuff. She'll read, going to look, talk to the EMA. If I'm wrong, Commissioner Hinton, you can let me know. She's going to look at, talk to the EMA director, because he has all these resources, know where storms come through the county and stuff, and try to take care of the ladies or the gentlemen that's older that don't have that capability of moving their brush. This county, we talk about growth all the time. So that means that there's going to be more condensed houses, more subdivisions. There are going to be people that have situations like that, don't have those resources to pick that up. So definitely, it's going to have to be more funding go through to the Highway Department to take care of these services. We all want these services, whether it be schools, highway, any of the services, ambulances, any of those services, we want those services. We're a little, out in the rural part of the counties, we're a little bit restricted of what we get, because we, our population, we don't have as much. So you're not going to have many ambulances out in Bethpage, Castane Springs, that you got in the city of Galton. But the rural areas, for us, highway, it's a different story. It's all about rural. It's nothing to do with the cities. So we need to be funding our highway departments a lot more, a lot better. We need to take care of those paving, those roads. Not only people, I'm seeing people from Galton, Hendersonville come out Bethpage sometimes. They like pretty good roads. Tree across limb, road, limb cross, whatever, they want those picked up. And that's just part of the highway. It's a rural service. It's probably one of the only ones. Coats of Plankton, I guess it's more or less a rural service. We're underfunded, and I know I made some statements, but I don't want to punish our citizens too, also by doubling our permit fees. That's the only thing I had there. But we're underfunded in those departments, way underfunded. We had to take money out of County General to fund those. So we're going to have to figure some way to get some revenue sources to fund some of these. And that's just a comment I had.
All right. Mr. Pomeroy?
I would like to agree with the Commissioner, the Commissioner just spoke. I think we all like our services, and we're here tonight to vote to pay for them, and I would like to call for the question.
We have a second from Mr. Foster. Put it on the board, please.
There are two people in the queue. Both of them have already spoken.
All right. The call for the question on the budget resolution is on the board. Each Commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-one votes are entered. Anyone not voting, wish to vote? Anyone wish to change your vote? Receiving the necessary two-thirds vote, the question has been called for. We're now...
Chairman?
Got it. Yeah. We got it. Okay, we're getting ready to vote on fifteen oh six oh six, approval budget for County General Schools Highway Fund. Commissioner Guthrie?
Mr. Chairman, I have indirect conflict. I'm going to go with my conscience.
Okay. Commissioner Rain?
I have indirect conflict of interest, and I will be voting my conscience.
All right. Anyone else? Mr. Schell?
I have an indirect conflict. I'll be voting my conscience.
Okay. Commissioner Foster?
Mr. Chairman, I have indirect conflict of interest, but I'll be voting my conscience.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Tieders?
Mr. Chairman, I have indirect...
My conscience.
All right. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I have indirect conflict. I'll be voting my conscience.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, it's on the board.
Budget resolution is on the board. Each Commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-two votes are entered. All twenty-three votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? Resolution is approved, eighteen affirmative votes.
Mr. Gooden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to be very clear just to say, Mr. Chairman, if any, it's beyond our duty. I know I speak for my office, Budget Committee. First off, Chairman, for the Long Director, without objection, because orders passed, we can now move fifteen oh six actually rather than a pass.
That is correct. We will not be on a continuation, but...
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Real brief, special thanks to the Budget Committee, Dr. Long, his office, Keston, and I'm not giving names there, and Liam and Erica, and their office, Kim and Tettey, especially the elected officials. It's been noted over the time, and department heads. In the hearing process from the cuts that we made in requests, every one of those had the opportunity to come back and make a presentation, has been noted. To my knowledge, one hundred percent of those were aware to sit down and have a conversation with and work things out between myself, the Chairman, Chris Tieders, Vice Chairman, as well as the committee. Every one of those in hearing, Chairman, agreed with the process at hand. Dr. Phillips, School Board, all involved, and a lot of the Election Commission, I mean Election Commission, I'm sorry, a lot of the elected officials and department heads, Mr. Chairman, really, really worked with us, and to those, we say a special thank you. I know I speak for everyone on that. And most importantly, there are some, and I'm not going to point out names, that came to us pointing out the fact that they understood where we were budget numbers, and they had faith where we were going. To those, we say a special thank you. And I want to say one last thing on that. We hear you to the employees and everyone about the insurance. Raise makes no, is a wash in a roundabout way. If your insurance is gone up, that is something, and I'm asking all our department heads and elected officials to remind them, that is something that we are, Dr. Long's helped. Hopefully, coming back next year with far better information and better pricing. And, Mr. Chairman, I don't forget to some people, but I apologize. Thank you for all of those. Moving on real quick, Mr. Chairman. Fifteen oh six dash seven, appropriation of nine forty-five fifteen, pass through funds. It was unanimous, I so voted.
All right. We have a motion, second. Any discussion? Who made the second? Mr. Foster, we're sorry.
Resolutions on the board. Each Commissioner, please record your vote. All twenty-three votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? It is unanimous, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Gooden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Fifteen oh six dash oh eight, number five, the authorization of transfers, four seventy-two nine thirty, with categories of the budget line items as Summer County Highway, as submitted to the Budget Committee, was unanimous, I so voted.
All right. Motion. Who's the second? Mr. Pomeroy. All right. Any discussion? Seeing no one in the queue, let's vote.
Resolution is on the board. Each Commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-one votes are entered. Anyone not voting, wishing to vote? Anyone wishing to change your vote? Receives twenty-two affirmative votes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gooden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Fifteen oh six dash oh nine, the authorization person for the radio equipment that we have, we have no, we have to purchase, that's gone through both emergency as well as budget and legislative, it's sixty thousand five fifty, for the sheriff's office contribution for security technologies, it was unanimous, I so voted.
All right. There's a motion, there's a second. Mr. Foster. All right. Any discussion? Seeing no one in the queue?
Resolution is on the board, sorry, Mr. Chairman. Resolution is on the board. Each Commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty votes are entered. Twenty-one votes are entered. Anyone not voting, wish to vote? Anyone wish to change your vote? Receives twenty-three affirmative votes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gooden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Fifteen oh six dash ten, number seven, appropriation, twenty-five thousand additional ambulance fees for patient refunds for the emergency medical service, both unanimous, emergency as well as budget, I so voted.
All right. Motion, second by Mr. Foster. Any discussion? Seeing no one in the queue?
Resolution is on the board. Each Commissioner, please record your vote. All twenty-three votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? It is unanimous, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gooden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As noted, number eight, pull fifteen oh six dash one two twelve, number nine, authorization transfers from basic categories between the Summer County Health Department, to the County